Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our regularly scheduled Board meeting, Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. We will be going into closed session. Madam Clerk?
Item one, Pursuant to Government Code 54957A: Consultation with Legal Counsel and Calaveras County Sheriff's Office Personnel Regarding Matters Posing a Threat to the Security of Public Buildings, Essential Public Services, and Public's Right of Access to Public Services or Facilities, or a Threat to Critical Infrastructure Controls or Information.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Any online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. Then we'll adjourn to closed session. We'll be back at 9:00 a.m. Good morning. Welcome, everyone, and welcome back. If everybody can stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance. And gentlemen, if we can take our caps off. Thank you. County Council, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could we report out from closed session?
Closed session for today, March 11th. Item one, Pursuant to Government Code 54957A: Consultation with Legal Counsel in Calaveras County Sheriff's Office Personnel Regarding Matters Posing a Threat to the Security of Public Buildings, Essential Public Services, the Public's Right of Access to Public Services or Facilities, or a Threat to Critical Infrastructure Controls or Information. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to staff announcements. Who've we got today?
This is Penny. Lisa Shauna with Environmental Management Agency Animal Services. Today we have Penny. Penny is a female spayed pit bull mix. She's probably about nine months old and weighs about 50 pounds. Shauna, she's going on 50 pounds?
Yes.
So Penny came to us around December, and she was found running down Mountain Ranch Road with a new collar and a new leash. She has a microchip, but unfortunately it was no longer valid, so that was kind of a bummer. Penny's a confident dog, and she is very confident with both people and dogs. She enjoys, of course, all the attention she is getting and returns the affection all the time. She's very energetic and pulls on the leash and is eager to explore. She will sit for treats. Huh, Penny? Let's see if she'll sit for treats. Yeah, sit for treats, Penny. Good girl. And she does well in a crate. Penny may be a little nervous when meeting a dog at first, but within a couple moments she wants to play. Even though she plays a little rough, she has had many successful play dates and with both females and males. So a meet and greet is required if you are interested in her, or if you have another dog as well. You can call us at 754-6509. Penny, good girl. And Penny, I would have taken Penny home too because she looks just like my dog, Charlie, which was, Charlie was our first fail foster event. Yeah, they called me up and they said, "Boss, if you're gonna start making us do this foster event, you're gonna have to take this dog." Yeah, foster fail. So he looks just like, she looks just like my Charlie. So we had a very successful Focus CCAS rabies and microchip clinic this past Saturday. We gave over 61 microchips and 162 rabies vaccines. That's a lot. And they were given at the drive-through clinic. We'd like to thank Dr. Michael Hayes, Focus members, CCA staff, and all volunteers for making this another successful event. We're looking forward to having several more adoption events. As all of you know, our last adoption event, which was the kissing booth for little four-legged friends, was very successful. We adopted out eight animals. So just, yeah, so woo, that's awesome.
Congratulations.
So what's that? That's humans. So that was, if we adopt one animal, that's a success story. So we're looking forward to very many more adoption events that are coming around the corner. Irish Days on March 15th at the Murphy's Library, Regent Cajun on April 26th in downtown Santa Dres, Airport Days on May 3rd, hopefully it's not raining like it was and storming last year, at the Calaveras Airport. We hope to be at the Calaveras County Fair. And then Summer Levin, our adoption event in the summer, and this, we'll be hosting that at the shelter. So our calendar is getting full, huh, Shauna?
Yes.
And we look forward to very many events and making sure our animals go to their fun-loving human families. That is all I have.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
If the chip is old and doesn't work anymore, do you put another chip in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Super.
Yeah, they go out chipped, vaccinated, spayed, and neutered. They're ready to go. Is anybody in here interested? Thank you, thank you very much.
Do we have any more staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognition and acknowledgements.
Item two, Proclamation, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Adopt a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as American Red Cross Month in Calaveras County.
And I'll hand the gavel over to Supervisor Andal.
Whereas the American Red Cross carries forward the humanitarian legacy of its founder, Clara Barton, whose noble dedication to alleviating suffering continues to inspire service today. And whereas, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of American Red Cross volunteers and community supporters who give back to Calaveras County and elsewhere to advance the Red Cross mission. And whereas, these volunteers make life-saving contributions through multiple vital services: delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters; providing critical blood donations for hospital patients; supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers; teaching life-saving skills, including first aid and CPR; and helping reconnect loved ones separated by global crises. And whereas, the work volunteers do to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our Calaveras community's resilience, is made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it is needed. And whereas, the American Red Cross exemplifies the spirit of compassion and service that strengthen our community, inspiring others to join in the humanitarian mission. Is there any public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carolyn Steymes. I'm with the American Red Cross. I've been with them nearly nine years. My main role is the Regional Disability Integration Lead. I have a few other roles also. I'd like to read the mission, which you heard a little bit of that in the proclamation. The Red Cross mission is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers we have here, and the generosity of donors focusing on disaster preparedness, relief, and support. And I have some of my other volunteers from Calaveras County.
Hi, I'm Laura Baumann. I've been a volunteer since May of this year, and I work in the recruitment area. But I did want to let you know that in 2024, we had 47 cases we responded to, 111 clients served, and over $38,000 dispersed in financial aid. We had a blood drive yesterday at the Native Sons of the Golden West, and we will have one May 14th up in Arnold at the Moose Lodge. Thank you.
And just a few other statistics for you for Calaveras County. In our Hope Premier Program, we installed a total of 250 smoke alarms. In our sheltering, we had a couple of shelters that we opened this past year, one for the Arrow Fire and one for the Maria Fire in Moke Hill. And for our dat, our Response Disaster Action Team, we had a total of 15 responses in Calaveras County.
Good morning. My name is Marcy Powers, and I am from Arnold. And I just wanted to share with you, I'm a new trainee. And my husband and I personally experienced the compassion, kindness, and generosity of the Red Cross. We were displaced from our home in the Butte Fire in 2015. We had no place to go. And we ended up staying at a Red Cross, two Red Cross shelters over the course of three weeks. We could not have recovered in the way we did without the Red Cross. And we are so ever grateful. And so, over those years, we've been reinventing ourselves in Arnold, and we decided to try to give back, and hopefully we can share that same kindness and generosity and compassion with people who are facing disasters in the future. We just had a training exercise on Saturday at Bret Hart High School. And I just wanted to thank the county for your participation. We had 30 people from Calaveras County come and train to be volunteers to help in the event of disasters in Calaveras County. 20 people from the county offices were there to support us. I think that it included HHS, and the Calaveras Public Health Response Team was there, OES was there from Tuolumne County, Scott Nannick, who's the superintendent of Bret Hart, was there with his team. And we really had a very successful training event, and so that we're getting ready in the event that we have a disaster. And I just wanted to thank the county for its support. Thank you so much. Oh, and if there are any people here who would like to volunteer for the Red Cross, let us know.
Yes, you can go to www redcross.org or 1-800-RED-CROSS for more information. Anyone else? Would you stand, please, so that we can be recognized? Thank you.
Bring it back to the board.
I would just like to say, I know you, and I know the time that you give to the Red Cross, but I also want to thank you for all the other work that you do, because you volunteer on many different levels. So thank you.
I'll say thank you to the Red Cross. I worked closely during the Butte Fire from a nonprofit that I was a part of, and they were there immediately up in rural flat in Mountain Ranch and helping through that, you know, getting through that disaster. So thank you. Now, therefore, be it resolved. Oh, may I have a motion?
I'll move this item.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims March 2025 as American Red Cross Month in Calaveras County, and recognizes all Red Crossers who selflessly answer the call and give their time to help whenever and wherever, and who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton. We encourage others to join this Red Cross commitment to give back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Andal. And now we'll move on to our next proclamation.
Item three, Proclamation, Economic and Community Development. Adopt a proclamation designating March 2025 as Arts Education Month in Calaveras County.
And I'll hand the gavel over to Supervisor Stopper.
Whereas March is...
Thank you so much, Teresa. I knew we had you here for a reason. Whereas, March is officially recognized as California Arts Education Month by the California Department of Education.
And whereas, the state of California defines arts education to include courses of study in interdisciplinary learning in dance, music, theater, design, visual, written, and media arts. And whereas, the arts are an essential part of a complete education, no matter if it happens in the home, school, or community. Whereas, these experiences encourage creative learning in children and young adults. And whereas, a well-rounded education should include the stimulation and creative thinking that arts help to develop. And whereas, it is important that we recognize and celebrate the central role of arts education in our schools. And whereas, students of all ages benefit from artistic learning, innovative thinking, and creativity.
Will there be any public comment?
It always is when I'm here. Good morning. I'm Kathy Mazafaro, and as of April 1st, I will start my 10th year as your Executive Director for the Calaveras County Arts Council. Oh, thank you. I've always been upfront that arts education and the kids of our county are first and foremost in my mind, always. I love all of our programs, but everything we do to support the future, that's number one. We have reception invitations for each of you, because this month, we have an opening reception for what we call Art Spirit. All of the artwork that fills the gallery is created by high school students here in Calaveras County. Last year, one of our students was voted Best of Show, and her artwork went down to Congressman McClintock's office for his congressional reception, and it was voted fourth out of all of the artwork in his district. We'd love to have you stop by and take a look at all this incredible artwork. And as your card says, you have a reception to pick this month. You have, we're doing a joint reception with the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce on the 20th. And then our closing month in April, where we will actually have had time to have the show juried, and by professional artists who don't know any of the kids. And they'll get, they'll get little prizes and ribbons, et cetera. This Saturday and Sunday, Calaveras County will be represented in Sacramento by a young woman by the name of Anastasia Sharp. She's our Poetry Out Loud champion, and she and 52 kids like her will be participating in the statewide Poetry Out Loud competition in Sacramento. I was always surprised when we had to start presenting Poetry Out Loud. I thought, kids today, they're never free of this. Why would they want to memorize a poem? You'd be surprised. I was, and I was delighted. And we're represented very well every year. So thank you very much for your support. I listen enough to my comrades in arms from other counties, and I know just how special we are, and just how lucky we are to have all of you and the support that you give the arts. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your dedication, Kathy. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Will there be any further public comment?
Just a moment.
With that, I'll bring you back to the board. If there's no any comments by the board, I will entertain a vote.
I'll move.
Oh, what, a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's, that's 5-0, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, therefore, be proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors recognizes March 2025 as Arts Education Month in Calaveras County as a way to further strengthen the importance of the arts and share the message with friends, family, and communities. And it was passed and adopted today, so.
Thank you. And I'll be back in May with your invitation to Music in the Parks.
Thank you, Supervisor Stopper. And we'll move on to our next proclamation.
Item four, Proclamation, Health and Human Services Agency. Adopt a proclamation declaring the month of March 2025 as Social Work Appreciation Month in Calaveras County.
And I'll hand it over to Supervisor Follendorf.
Whereas, people have entered the social work profession for generations because they genuinely care about helping improve the lives of people, family, community, and our nation. And whereas, this year's Social Work Month theme, Social Work Compassion and Action embodies the fact that social workers go through years of education and training, so they have the skills and expertise to transform their care for others into actions that bring positive results. And whereas, social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all people, no matter their race, culture, or religion. And whereas, social workers are committed to the enhancement of human well-being and meeting the basic human need of all people, with particular attention to the needs and empowerment of those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty. And whereas, social workers in all parts of our society, including child welfare and adult social service agencies, schools, hospitals, the military, community centers, and government, helping people, families, and communities secure services and policies they need to thrive. And whereas, social workers help protect millions of children and teenagers from abuse and neglect, providing services and support that help strengthen families that are under stress and help create new families through adoption. And whereas, social workers endeavor to work throughout our society to meet people where they are and help empower people in our society to reach the goals they wish to attain. And with that, I will open it to public comment. And I know we have a number of individuals in this room. So maybe you guys can stand up, so we can all see who is representing the social work team here. There's quite a few of you.
Good morning. Meili Johnson, I'm the Deputy Director of our Social Services for the county. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to really recognize my social work team. The majority are here. We have a few that are not. It's a coordinate for us. Couple people out. But I just really wanted to say thank you, guys. Their work in adult protective services and child welfare specifically is often the silent work that a lot of people don't really get to see, what they do to support families and children and elders in our communities. They have worked very hard and been very creative in the ways that they're supporting people and helping to connect to resources and helping to build new resources for our county and our communities. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to just say thank you, all of you, for the work you do and for showing up every day for the people of Calaveras.
Michael?
Good morning, Board Supervisors. Michael Magania. You know, I just want to echo what Meili had mentioned. There's so much to say, but so little time to say it. But I'll be very brief. We know that social workers within Health and Human Services serve across every stage of life. They investigate child abuse while working to prevent harm, while supporting families and children. They also safeguard our elders from neglect and exploitation, helping them stay and remain safe and independent. But beyond these responsibilities, social workers absorb a lot of the work that they do, the emotional weight of those they serve, yet they show up every single day, driven by both compassion and commitment. And I just wanted to thank the board today for recognizing this as Social Worker Appreciation Month. Your support reinforces the value of their contributions and reminds them that our social workers, that their dedication doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move the side.
Moved by Supervisor Toffanoli. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Andal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed in recognition of numerous contributions made by the Calaveras County social workers. The Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaim the month of March 2025 as Social Work Appreciation Month in Calaveras County, and calls upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in Calaveras County in celebration and support of the social work profession. Thank you all for everything you do for the county and its constituents.
I'm going to hold on.
Hold on. Super. Thank you, Supervisor Follendorf. And we'll move on to general public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. Californian law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment today?
I am Lynette Smith-Covey. I own Four Horse Ranch of Valley Springs with my husband, Jeremy. We are trying to build a nonprofit 501(c) business that offers horse breeding, training, riding lessons, and trail rides. Our clientele would be primarily foster children and families with special needs. Forty percent Calaveras residents, 60% tourists from all over the world. Four Horse Ranch has been sub- former Chamber of Commerce Executive Director; District Five Supervisor Benjamin Stoppa; Calaveras Office of Economic and Community Development Director Kathy Colino; and Calaveras Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Rachel Sparks and President Shereen Rash. Over the past two budget cycles, at the insistence of D1 Supervisor Tofanelli, D5 Stoppa, and former D2 Jack Garamendi, the Calaveras Chamber of Commerce has received $100,000 from transient occupancy tax revenue, $50,000 per annual budget cycle, to fund the promotion of tourism to the west end of Calaveras County. Forest Ranch, in spite of repeated requests, has never received a substantive support from Calaveras Chamber of Commerce, the Valley Springs Area Business Association, and Calaveras Office of Economic and Community Development, or the Calaveras Government. Forest Ranch is an exemplification of the west end Calaveras County tourism promotion business. The TOT-funded Calaveras Chamber of Commerce is supposed to be developing and supporting. We respectfully request that you all speak on behalf of Forest Ranch at the conclusion of Thursday's Planning Commission meeting, as Forest Ranch has been designed to meet and exceed all criteria set forth by the Calaveras Planning Department and commissioned to safely, professionally, respectfully promote tourism to the west end of Calaveras County. I am Lynette Smith-Covey, and I own Four Horse Ranch, Valley Springs.
Thank you. Mr. Butner.
My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. Here are excerpts from the statement I delivered on March 6, 2025, at the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board of Directors Quarterly Meeting. This community and several nearby wildland urban interface communities in the dense timber belt of the four counties south-central Sierra subregion are under an extraordinary new threat of catastrophic fire of man-made origin and negligence erupting in Arnold behind Medallon Center. This threat of catastrophic fire has a name, Tesla Supercharger Electric Vehicle Charging Station EVCS. A rationally cited EVCS would have been a very desirable addition to Arnold. Unfortunately, this isn't it. The EVS site selection process and its construction at this precarious location was irrational and irresponsible. On March 4, 2025, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, SNC, advised me by letter that the agency has no authority to take any action on the project described in my letter. I respectfully urged the SNC to reconsider their position on my request for action and examine their core mission more closely. SNC, a state agency, is tasked with building resilience in California's Sierra Cascade region, inclusive of improving the environmental, economic, and social well-being. I had expected that includes doing everything possible in the agency's power to ensure our region is not reduced to ash from a 100% forewarned and preventable man-made calamity. My response to SNC's Board of Directors, which now includes Martin Huberty, was that lack of authority does not preclude SNC from directing my valid and grave concern to the state agency or agencies having authority to act on my concerns. That agency may be Cal Fire, Cal OES, or perhaps Cal EPA, whose mission is to restore, protect, and enhance the environment to ensure public health, environmental quality, and economic vitality. Regardless of how rapidly fire officials claim they are capable of effectively responding to the scene of a potential EV fire at this location, it is unlikely fast enough to suppress the potentially devastating effects of thermal runaway. The seed of a potential firebomb capable of laying waste to communities in the four counties south-central Sierra subregion was negligently sighted in a vulnerable location in distressingly close proximity to a densely forested neighborhood, large-capacity propane tanks, and unregulated traffic. Lahaina, Pacific Palisades, Rimbut, Paradise Eaton, Tubbs, Caldor, this list tragically grows. Do we want to lose our cherished Stanislaus National Forest, Calaveras Big Trees State Park, and forest communities to a forewarned and preventable disaster? My name's Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com.
Good morning Chairman Huberty and our board members. My name is Teri Lane, and today I'm here representing the Calaveras County Library Commission. I have brought for you a copy of the 2024 Annual Report highlights. As you know, last year was a time of transition for the libraries. As we said farewell to head librarian Nancy Giddens in July, and we welcomed the new head librarian Jesse Spray in September. During that time, library staff did not miss a beat. They continued to provide excellent customer service. From bookmobile visits to arts and crafts, children's programming, lunch at the library, summer reading program, and daily book circulation, media circulation, the library continuously provides excellent services for the community and supports. I am very proud to be a member of the Library Commission and a volunteer at the library in Arnold. The library system in Calaveras is something you can be very proud of too. They are just incredible and awesome, and I thank you for your continued support of them. So I'll let you read the report on your own. There it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Teri. Is there any other public comment? We'll move on now then to our consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. I know CEO Hitchcock would like to pull item number eight for a clerical.
Eleven and thirteen.
Eleven and thirteen.
Same, I had eleven.
Okay.
I'm sorry, was there another one?
So we have eight, eleven, and thirteen. Would any member of the public like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Do I have a motion for the rest of the consent agenda items? I'll move the rest. Second.
Oh, go ahead, Amanda. Amanda's got it.
All in favor? Aye. I'll hand it over to CEO Hitchcock for item number eight.
Good morning Chair Huberty. I need to make a clerical correction in the discussion summary on item eight. Item eight is an item to provide an allocation or contribution to the Murphy's Community Club in the amount of $3,000. In the body of the item, it says $7,000 written out. That should be $3,000.
Thank you. And I'll take the full for that one because the $4,000 was meant to go to the Arnold Rim Trail, and unfortunately, I thought their 501(c)(3) was through, but it was not. So you'll be seeing that at a later date. So do we have a motion then for item number? A public comment? Is there any public comment? Thank you Supervisor.
And we have no online public comment.
Thank you. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. I'll move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Passes five zero. I will move on to item number 11. Madam Clerk?
Action item, resolution, Human Resources, adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list associated with... I'm sorry, thank you, I'm reading.
I apologize.
I jumped thirteen, sorry. Item 11. Action item, Air Pollution Control District, authorize a grant funds redirection request for $209,429 of Carl Moyer grant program funds to the Butte County Air Quality Management District and approve memorandum of understanding for the same.
I'll hand the baton over to Ms. Follendorf because I'm sure she'll relay the same thing I have, only better.
Okay, if you think so.
Good morning.
Well, I think everyone knows we hate giving money away. So I guess my biggest concern is this is a lot of money that were given to another county, and I'm concerned that we're not putting the best, researching the best way to put this money back into our own communities. I have been asked over the years if there's been programs with this type of funding, and the people are going outside of this county to utilize these opportunities under this grant program, and I'm worried that the fact of that I'm hearing that people are going out of county to utilize other county opportunities and we're not providing them to our constituents, yet we're giving money to another county. And I'm just, I just think we need to figure out, I know there's time sensitive timeline on this, and we do need to put it somewhere, and I know Butte can really use it, but going forward, I think we need to relook at how we can be better with this program. And I am willing to work with whoever I need to work with to help us come up and present it to the board, so the board is happy to. So Ben, do you want to add anything to that?
That's exactly, and I think you're a good resource for implementing these type of funds with some more ideas. Every time we get a chance, you know, this money coming in matters to the people of Calaveras County, and implementing it in the county is what will best fit the people of Calaveras County. Amanda said the rest. She has the knowledge.
So I, and I get it, there is a time sensitivity. We're not going to hold that up, but we would like to work with you guys, if it's possible, to come up with some ideas to keep that money in the future.
Well, we have plenty. We have plenty, and we are working on that. Lisa Medina, APCO, and I'm going to hand it over to Michelle, our Deputy APCO, because we have some justifications and some acknowledgements that we'd like to make. We do have several funding projects that are in the pipe, just so you know, and I'll let Michelle take away.
Good morning Board, thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. I'm Michelle Turner, I'm the Deputy Air Pollution Control Officer for Calaveras County. I realize it's a lot of money, and it's very disappointing to have to send it to another county. Unfortunately, due to personnel shifts, vacancies in the department, and outreach issues, we were not able to spend the money in time. Butte County's already done that, and rather than send the money back to the state and have it be swept into the general fund, we want to support our fellow districts. Now, just to alleviate your concerns about future funding, we did recently sign an agreement which allocates $285,283.63 to a Carl Moyer project. We also have several projects, several applications for future projects, including a masticator for fuel reduction and fire breaks, several tractors for orchard work spraying and disking, and some additional agricultural work. So we have plenty of things in the pipeline to spend future money. I'm also planning on making some revisions to our website to make the outreach more available, and I would welcome any input you have. I do not foresee sending any more money to another county. This is a kind of a one-time thing.
Just beyond the website, you know, going out in the community, being involved and beating the drum.
Right.
Is probably the best way to get in touch with people here. You know, a lot of people, just because it's up on the website on the county, a lot of people don't go there looking for it, so.
You're absolutely correct. Participating in community events and developing suppliers might be also an option.
Maybe social, because my age group, we really go into social media and Instagram, so we can push some of that stuff out if it's on Instagram and other social media outlets. So I'm happy to say that kind of stuff to get it out, to get that information out there.
The RCD, the Fire Safe Councils, they're all in touch with people, doing a lot of these type of, type of, a lot of this type of work, so working with them would get in touch with a lot more people.
Right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Supervisor, did you want to pull this then for the next meeting?
No, no, we can go ahead. I just wanted to make sure we had a discussion about future funds.
Is there any further public comment? I'll bring it back to the board for any further comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Passes five zero. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to number 13, item number 13.
Item 13, resolution, Human Resources, adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list associated with the fiscal year 2024-25, mid-year budget adjustments made on February 25, 2025, and approve new job descriptions.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Yeah. No problem with these job descriptions or anything. As a matter of process moving forward, I just would like administration and the board and Health and Hu... Oh, I'm sorry. HR, Human Resources, to consider loading this up with the initial budget when it's presented to us so that we have an idea of what we're approving when it comes to our numbers. Not that, you know, there's much to say about majority of these job descriptions, but again, I think it would give us the full information to make a more educated decision when it comes to our finances.
Yes, and we can definitely do that.
I appreciate that. That's all I had on this. I'm not going to micromanage the positions at this time.
I do want to apologize to the board, we do have an error in the staff report. It says 24-20... Oh, no, never mind, it is right, sorry. My mind is on 25-26 fiscal year. I'm good. It's been a long week. It's only Tuesday.
You're getting ready for the next year already, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, but the Administrative Department, our Assistant CEO, has been talking to HR about us changing how we do this in the future, so that's discussions that we are already having.
I can appreciate that. I've had discussions with her shortly about it, and I just wanted the whole board to hear it and consider it. No problems will be out here right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Obstens. Any public comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move it. Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. We'll now move on to our regular agenda. Item number 16.
Item 16, agreement, Public Works, authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change order 60-03 to contract 1200-2103 with Suckett Construction LLC in the amount of
Good morning Chair Huberty, Board Supervisors, county staff, and the public. My name is Micah Martin, I'm your Public Works Director. I'm here before you today with this item. I'm sure the board is very familiar with this item, as we were recently in front of the board on October 8 for supplemental two of this change order. And at that time, it was understood that supplement three would be coming forward at a later date once their quantities had been further identified. We have been able to complete that work and identify the remaining quantities, and that is what is contained in this change order here. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for the board?
I'm looking at this bid item number 42. Roadway excavation was overdrawn. Does Unico actually have any idea what's going on? Did they look at it?
Aye.
We'll now move on to our regular agenda. Item number sixteen.
Item sixteen, agreement, Public Works authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change order six zero dash zero three to contract one-two-zero-zero dash two-one-zero-three with Suckett Construction LLC and the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred dollars.
Good morning, Chair Hubbard, E., Court Supervisors, County Staff, and the Public. My name is Micah Martin, I'm your Public Works Director. I'm here before you today with this item. I'm sure the Board is very familiar with this item, as we were recently in front of the Board on October eighth for supplemental two of this change order. And at that time, it was understood that supplement three would be coming forward at a later date, once their quantities had been further identified. We have been able to complete that work and identify the remaining quantities, and that is what is contained in this change order here. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions from the Board?
I'm looking at this bid item number forty-two. Roadway excavation was overdrawn. Does Unico actually have any idea what's going on? Did they look at anything? Do they, I mean, every time we come forward with a new adjustment that you're asking for, there's always funds that they've gone over on. This was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. How do we continually go over? Even this, we're estimating the cost of thirty dollars a cubic yard for the remaining thirty-three thousand, which continues to go up. Every time you come forward here, and you haven't been here, Micah, I'm not really on you, but the cubic yardage keeps going up. I just don't see how Unico has their hands on this, and that's what they're getting paid to do, and they just don't seem to be able to do it. And it always comes back to this Board, are we sending out some kind of message to everybody else that's going to be doing construction in the county? We've got a building coming up over mental health, or behavioral health, and other things going on, that it's okay to go over, just go back to the Board and tell them, oh, we went over, without stopping and saying, well, we need to get it cleared before we go further on it? It's a continuing thing that keeps going on here, and I don't think this is going to be the end of it. It's going to come back again. I just think Unico needs to be sat down and have somebody watch what's going on in this project. It's just continuing. And I have an issue with this two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I may not approve that, I'll approve the rest of it, but I may just put it back on Unico. I want more explanation, how do we get that far over?
I'd like to jump in here too, and add support what Supervisor Toffinelli is saying, and Supervisor Toffinelli has also brought up schedule, and the one thing that I take issue with in this report is saying that the thirty-three thousand cubic yards for 2025, that's for the end of the project. There is no appetite for this Board going into 2026, I'll tell you right now. And the schedule just keeps slipping and slipping and slipping, as does the, as do the funds. So I'd like to see till the end of the project now, going forward. Supervisor stopper.
I mean, there's nothing added that, that, you know, you've seen, you know, the schedule from the past and everything, Micah, so I would hope that you keep a keen eye on it, and we'll move forward and just, let's tighten up, let's tighten up the belt as we move forward, and that's why you're here, so I'm cautiously optimistic on moving forward with this with you, thank you.
My question is on the ninety thousand cubic yards. I thought that needed to be shifted again with art. I thought that was already shifted, I think we've been going back and forth on that, I don't understand why we're paying again for that to be shifted through when it's already going to be moving back into the project area. So I know that some of this is sensitive with the tribe, and I don't want to talk specifically about the artifacts, but my, I'm just concerned that we are paying again for more dirt that's already been shifted through last year. And I want to be cautious that we are not duplicating just because it's based off of, yeah, just conversations have been had with the tribe, but I am worried that we are double-shifting and paying more money that didn't need to be done for that dirt. I know we need to move on, and like Barton said, we just need to wrap this up. I think everyone wants to be done with this project and move on to something more positive at this point, but I am worried about seeing that ninety thousand cubic yard dirt when we've paid a lot of money over the last couple of years for that dirt to get shifted through.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other Board comments? Are there any comments from the public? Any other comments, Ms. Martin?
No, I just want to thank the Board for its time and patience with this project. I know it's been through some very dynamic changes and a lot of complications, but I can say with confidence that we do see that at the end of the tunnel, and I feel that we shouldn't be bringing forward too many more of these. There are a few things to get things wrapped up, but I could commit that I will be heavily involved in this project and keeping a close eye on things, and it's my commitment to have this project completed by the end of the year.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I will move the item.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All against? No.
No.
Passes three-two, does pass three-two, right?
Okay, we're going to have to.
Thank you, Micah and Robert. We'll move on now to item number seventeen.
Item seventeen, informational item, Administrative Office, receive a presentation from Westward Professional Services, formerly Odell Engineering, regarding the Calaveras County Comprehensive Parks Facilities and Recreation Master Plan and provide direction.
Come on up. Do you need a minute to set up?
I'm hoping that it's all set up.
Do you mind if we just take a five-minute break then?
Of course.
Thank you. Okay, we are back, and we are ready to hear about our Parks and Rec Master Plan. It's on.
It's on, okay, I see. Well, thank you for having me back to visit with you and share with you the Park and Recreation Master Plan for Calaveras County. We've been working on this for over a year now, and we're excited to share the results with you. Our agenda for today, just to review project timeline, review some of the key points, we received wonderful community feedback, helped us identify needs within the community, we did a financial assessment of the parks and recreation in the county, and with all of that analysis and assessment, we came up with some recommendations, and that led to an implementation plan. So just, you've seen this schedule before, we're at the end of it, we're finally at the last arrow. We've spent a lot of time doing research, inventory and assessment, wonderful time doing community outreach and meeting members of the community that really care about parks and recreation. Then we worked on the master plan itself, the document, and it's ready to go, ready for your review. I want to just review some of the master plan goals, this is actually from one of our very first meetings, that we were to consider the unique character of each district within the county, and as well as the county as a whole. Identify park and recreational needs and priorities through public input and analysis of current resources, and with that, develop management best practices and design guidelines to inform future improvements and expansion. And then in the end, provide recommendations for consideration by the county. So, starting off, we did a lot of research and data, we looked at demographics, we found out what is wonderful about Calaveras County, not just the demographics, but the rural character, each district has its own character as well, so we wanted to delve into that. We also looked at current trends and best practices nationally, as well as statewide, as well as in this county. And through that, we looked at NRPA, National Recreation Park Associate, California Parks and Recreation, Sports and Fitness Industry, as well as many others. And then we did analysis and needs assessment, and with that, we created this table, and I'm going to show you several tables that are from the actual document, this is just kind of a snapshot of what's in the document. But this one is where we looked at similar counties, we call them benchmarks, they're comparable counties in population size, in size of square mileage, and the population per square mileage, and we wanted to see what they do with their parks and recreation. And on the right-hand side, you can see how they, the structure that they use for their parks and recreation in their counties. So we also reviewed the general plan policy, which stated that there should be a, provide, that we should provide a minimum of three acres per one thousand residents. Working with the Parks and Recreation Commission, community organizations, and special districts to develop park and recreation facilities, and again, pursue partnerships, that was a key thing in the general plan policy, and it turned out, through all our research and assessment, that that was really key for the county. Park locations, we started out looking at the six that the county owns, and then we looked at joint use agreements that are with the school districts, and then you may recall back in August, we came back and talked to you about including non-county parks. Those, we received a list from the county that the ones, it doesn't include all of them, but it does include key parks within the county that are non-county owned. And so with that, we got into our mapping with GIS, the, I'm going to start at the upper left. We started with mapping the county parks, the six county parks, and where they are walkable within a half mile. Then we, after talking to many people, we found that lots of folks would rather drive fourteen or fifteen miles, and so on the right-hand side there, you see, once we expand that range to drivability, we start getting a bigger coverage for just those six parks. But then on the lower left, you see, once we add the non-county parks, we have everything almost all covered, other than the very northeast section. So then, when you look at the next one, which is the government-owned, big trees and all that in the upper northeast, we've got everything covered, as long as we include those government agencies, the non-county parks, and the county parks, there are a lot of recreational opportunities here. These are some of the focus groups that we work, that we met with and listened to, heard about what they are doing. Bret Hart Union High School District came to one of them, AMA came, a lot, we heard from all of these groups that, about how important they are to, so these are the partnerships that we're talking about. Community outreach, we did the supervisor interviews a little over a year ago, we had a Park and Recreation Commission meeting, and then we met with, went to all the districts, we had focus group meetings in all five districts, as well as community group meetings, and I have to say, we got wonderful feedback, wonderful attendance for such a rural area. We were really amazed with the amount of community input that we received. Through that, on the, in the middle there, we have the dot boards, we did a presentation, but we also had dot boards and post-it notes where people could non-verbally communicate what their needs and provide feedback. We also did the online survey that went out, was able to, folks could do it, you know, in the comfort of their own home on their computer, or they could do it at the outreach meetings. The goal was to have three hundred and eighty-one completed surveys, we luckily got four hundred and ninety-two, which is fantastic feedback. And these are just some of the charts that we got in, that I'm sharing here on the screen, graphs and things that came out of that survey, how important it is for county parks to be available. The word clouds on the lower side is, you know, the more people would answer a question with a certain word, the bigger the word got, so you could see basketball playgrounds, dogs, picnics, those were all important to the community. Other things we asked about in the survey were what concerns there might be when visiting county parks, what are the reasons for not visiting, for visiting non-county parks, and a lot of it had to do with the availability of recreational and also the locations. So what we found was, Calaveras County has many parks that are developed and maintained by community groups, they're well-used and provide recreational venues for district groups within the county, and they also, we heard, require maintenance and improvements, and they don't always have the funds to make those improvements. And the school properties also provide recreational opportunities, especially Bret Hart High School, but even the elementary and middle schools as well. This is more of the needs assessment, the images you see here are kind of the top five that were on the dot boards, there was a lot of input, skate park, soccer, dog parks was really big, playgrounds, pump track, outdoor stage, hiking trail, and gathering spaces for family and friends, we heard a lot about that, especially up in West Point, where they said during COVID, those gathering spaces were really important. Softball, baseball, and then non-motorized water sports were the top, and, but there were many others that are important to certain districts. So with that, we started with our recommendations. As far as facilities, there was a lot of need for playgrounds, especially as you see on the upper right, inclusive playgrounds. Playground where children with disabilities and physical challenges can go and play, and recreate, and, you know, get dirty and have fun. Pickleball is another big trend that we're seeing all over California. I know in this past year, we've, at Alex Quinones, there's been installed some more pickleball courts, so that's really nice to see that moving forward. Sport courts, dog parks, we heard a lot about dog parks, and then also potentially a regional sports facility that would attract visitors into the county and provide some economic development. Other recommendations we did, now this focuses just on the six county parks, we have this proprietary system that we use for scoring parks, and we, on this one, we use six metrics, anywhere from the conditions, the accessibility, the population size, how much the park is used, and I want to just clarify that one is the highest score, and that park would re, improving that park presents the most benefits for the community. A six is the lowest score, which means the least benefit. And as you can see, Fried Burger Park is a six, only because the only thing it needs is a bench. It's already got a drinking fountain, it's already got a lawn, it's a nice little spot. But Alex Quinones is number one, because a lot of people really enjoy that park, and there's a lot of wonderful amenities, and with the grant, some of those improvements have already been made. So the county budget, we went through and researched the numbers, looked at very closely at the county budget for parks and recreation. Turns out that there is not much annual funding specific to parks and recreation that has been allocated on an annual basis. The Prop sixty-eight grant funding was used for improvements at Feeny, Alex Quinones, and Railroad Flat, improving those parks, and then the funds have been allocated by the Board for specific cases, on a case-by-case basis. So with that, we created this financial action plan, again, this table is in the document, joint use agreements, these are all options to explore, donor campaigns, crowdfunding, like GoFundMe, public-private partnerships, corporate sponsorships, foundations, gifts, and trusts, those are all things to explore for additional funding. We also were asked to look at the organizational structures, structure of the parks and recreation in the county. Short-term, we looked at pursuing a partnership with a park agency, such as Amador County Recreation Agency, which is next door. such as Amador County Recreation Agency, which is next door. And they, we, they had been reviewed by the county, and they are willing to come into Calaveras County as well. Development of one or more park districts in the county, making them less of a volunteer, more of a actual parks district. And then a potential joint park agency. Long-term goals would be, and this, they're long-term because of funding. This is tied to the financial assessment. Is development of a county parks and recreation manager position. And then eventually, and this might be a 10-year goal, is a department. It all depends on how the funding comes around. Additional priorities we looked at are strengthening the community partnerships and increasing recreational services. That's based on the needs assessment. Exploring options to develop that regional sports facility, and that might come with that private partnership, private-public partnership. And then increasing public awareness of the county support available for parks. And that is, kind of leads us to, the top recommended priority here is just the current process with the Economic and Community Development Manager and Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission. Just getting the word out, I think a lot of folks didn't know there was a process in place. That's what we heard in the community outreach. So just letting them know, I think there's already been some advances made in that there's now a website. There's information on the website, so the word is already getting out. Also, developing management practice and design guidelines for future improvements and expansion. There is a section in the document that details that, you know, how to, if you're looking at installing a playground, what the best practices are for that, as an example. And then also establishing maintenance standards for partners. That, so any of these non-county part partnerships, establishing maintenance standards is important so that on, maybe on an annual basis, their irrigation system is checked. Or we make sure that the safety surfacing under a playground is, meets the code standards for safety. Things like that would help make sure that all the parks in the county are safe and secure. And then also providing recommendations for approach to implement parks and recreation improvements. Right now, there isn't really a structure for that. It happens, but it, developing a structure would help the community know where to go, who to ask, and that type of thing. So the next steps is to adoption. So we're asking that you review the Calaveras County Parks Master Plan and then formally adopt the plan on March 25th.
Thank you. Do we have any board questions?
Questions, can I make statements?
You can make a statement as well.
Well, questions and statements. So something moving forward with this, you know, other than non-county, Army Corps of Engineers Hogan Dam, District Five doesn't have a county-owned park with.
I don't think so at all, right?
I don't think so. Yeah. Yeah, and there isn't a whole lot of opportunity down there. But there is one that, you know, if it presents itself and I would like everyone to consider, but that would be a capital investment in the future that, you know, money's a thing. So just to keep on everyone's mind, maybe to put in there is the Rancho Homeowners Association has the Rancho Clubhouse and everything. And they're trying to keep up on the, they have a pool down there, and they have a building. They have other properties. If the, you know, if they're willing to consider, because membership is declining. That Homeowners Association of Rancho Calaveras, it's not a required, you know, I can't be quoted, but out of over 3,000 developed properties, I think their membership's down to around 150, maybe less now. I'm not sure, it may have gone back up, but that's 5%, 5% membership. So the money is a hardship for them a lot of times. And that would be beneficial to a very large population of Calaveras County, not only for District Five, but it would be accessible for the whole county. But District One's right in the area also, if we were to ever consider owning a pool. But, you know, something to consider for the future. I'm not counting on it getting done tomorrow, you know, on a capital investment. The other thing I would like the board to consider, and it's not specifically set towards setting a park up, but working with planning and moving forward on a special permit for off-road events, but limited, like maybe five events a year. Something like what we do up in the old Shad's races, even though they aren't on the Shad's property anymore. There's some hurdles there with, you know, some of the places they would like to do it and everything. And we would have to get an environmental impact report done to be able to facilitate it going to other places. But I think that can be partially mitigated by considering limiting the amount to like maybe five a year within the county for large events like that. So that's something I'd like the board to consider moving forward. There, there wasn't a lot here, because typically, Calaveras County doesn't think about the county owning dirt bike tracks or anything. But there are a lot of young people that are in the racing circuit. And we actually have someone that organizes the events for California and does all the permitting and everything that lives within the county, that I talk to frequently. And they would love to bring that up here. Huge economic boost, and Shad's comes up, it's all the way up there outside Willsville, but everyone driving in and out spends a lot of money. When people get together and do some off-road on, you know, and everything, there's, the injection of people coming into the county for those type of events is huge, and they spend a lot of money in the county.
We have seen that, and luckily, we have the fairgrounds here. But Lori's been instrumental in the BMX races coming back to the fairgrounds. 3,000 people come into that, and so I hear you.
My, yeah, and I have a good friend in Amador County that grew up here, that their kids running national, and that was one of his first races when he first opened up there. What, a couple of years ago now, Lori?
This is the fourth year that we.
Yeah, so it's the fourth year. He was there for the first one. He loved it. And now he's, he's like number two in the nation.
I think it's hugely important for our youth. And if you look at the demographics that are in your report, we need to keep our families here. And I think having spaces for people to recreate is up there.
Get some using their muscles and get some off their phone.
Supervisor Follendorf, did you have?
Yes. Ben actually said a lot of what I was also going to say. I have had the same interest in my district of those types of activities. And I think that that is something that everyone would like to see, if there's a way to invest into that. Recently, we just adopted the copper community plan. So I wasn't sure with staff, this might be more of a staff question. On the county side, can we overlay some of those community plans? Because it was recognized with Arnold and other things in this report. And I just want to make sure that since this has happened, we did adopt that.
Right, so I think that was the issue, is that we were in the process of this plan, and the copper plan was adopted after this was started. So of course, we'll include some of those.
Thank you. And then same thing, while it may seem like District Four has stuff because of AM and the city, really, we're on the same boat as Stopper District. There is technically no county park in District Four. So same thing. But we'll start with his district.
Supervisor Randall.
Yeah, so District Two has a lot of parks. It's a very big district. But I did wonder, there's a couple of things that aren't listed, like West Point Elementary School is not listed, while all the others are. And the Railroad Flat Ballpark is not listed, which is leased by a nonprofit up there. So I'd like to see those listed if possible. And then I'd also thought about the one at Hogan, that's run by the Army Corps of Engineers. It would be nice, you know, if we have this plan, for people to see that it is there, even though it's not a county park. It's a great little park area.
Sure, Brittany, could I address that?
Please.
So as far as the schools, we really looked at schools where we had joint use agreements. That was one of the criteria, was to make sure that it was truly publicly available. So we would need to look at that and see if we have that available at that school.
And then I had another question that might be for you, Teresa. Having the work that needs to be done in Mount Ranch Park with the septic, if that should be listed.
So to answer, to address that, I think one of the things this master plan looks at is the actual amenities of parks, but it didn't look at the infrastructure. So a number of our parks have, of course, irrigation system issues, septic issues, those other things. I think that's more of a facilities analysis. I don't know, Karen, if you want to speak to that. But those types of things weren't really analyzed as part of this project.
Yeah, you're correct there. And I think, from what I heard, the sewer issue came up just recently.
Well, no, it's, we.
Or maybe I just heard of it.
Just recently, it's urgent.
I'm trying to keep it underground.
One more question. Why is there no mention of the TOT dollars that have been allocated in the last couple?
It is. It was, it was for consideration and moving forward, because we didn't do it. I think the way they, they put it in there in summary was correct. You know, consider that as an option as we move forward, because we didn't set that stone in the past. And as with TOT dollars, we don't set much in stone for the future, because a different board can make different decisions.
Well, again, the whole idea was that this wouldn't be a plan that sits on a shelf. It's a living document, and we would love to have the wherewithal to then push it forward. Supervisor Follendorf, do you still have?
I would, I think so.
Supervisor Toffenauer?
I want to hear a public comment. I see my representative from District One is here, and hopefully she has some insight on it. She worked on this tremendously, and I want to thank her. Ms. Judy Allen.
Judy Allen, Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And the commission's been working really hard on this. And I'm here to really encourage you to adopt this master plan. We feel like if we had a master plan, a firm master plan, it will open more grant opportunities for parks and recreation. We've had, we have a really strong Parks and Recreation Commission right now. Excuse me. And a lot of ideas being tossed around. And especially, and to address your comments, Ben, I'm very familiar with the Rancho Clubhouse and their facilities. And I know that they, they have been having struggles in keeping the facilities going. And we have other people here that are going to address other aspects. But I just wanted to comment that a future partnership with the Amador Agency could open opportunities for the Rancho Clubhouse and allow us to utilize those facilities better. And so I really would encourage you to adopt the master plan. And we have other members that are going to speak.
Good to see you, Judy.
Good to see you too, Ben.
It's been a while.
Could I ask you really quickly, when is your next commission meeting?
It's the third. March 20th.
Thank you.
March 20th.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
She's yours, but I like her.
This is, this is.
Kate Allen, I'm the District Two Parks and Rec Commissioner. Thanks, you guys, for looking at the plan. I did have a question. I didn't see the top allocation mentioned in this recent draft either. Where is it mentioned?
It's, it's not in that, but it's up here towards.
My microphone, at the request of the board.
It's up towards the beginning, and it's for.
In the plan, Karen, is it in the plan?
It's not specifically in the plan, because we haven't given direction towards that, so it's consideration.
It's mentioned.
It's mentioned up the top. Yeah, so for consideration in the packet right here.
For me, for the background, that it's established in Chapters One and Two about the environment, looking at this plan, I do think it's an important piece of information. This board, for two budget cycles, has allocated top funds to Parks and Recreation. Those top funds are what paid for this master plan to be done at all. So to, for, in, when we talk about the funding, to act like there's absolutely zero money for Parks and Rec, I feel like it gives maybe a wrong impression, because the board has allocated funding towards Parks and Rec, and we've used that funding for this plan totally. So, you know, for us on the Parks and Rec Commission, that was a big victory of support from the board. And so I feel like it's being just kind of like, well, it's not a big deal. And I honestly just don't quite understand that.
So I'll answer that. So I agree with you that it is a, you know, was a big step forward for the board to allocate the funding, but it was only done on a single basis. So we didn't want to give the misinterpretation of the plan that there was ongoing funding allocated to Parks and Recreation. That is really a board decision based on the funding available in any given year and the other priorities that the board has to fund. So there's not ongoing funding allocated to Parks and Recreation. And I think that is an important thing for folks to realize, that there has been some one-time funding. I do believe, the board believes Parks and Rec is an extremely important piece to our community. We do have a lot of volunteers who are very committed to Parks and Recreation. But again, the board, in looking at this master plan, this may give them some opportunities to say, hey, we'd really like to fund this piece of it, or to really provide ongoing funding. But again, it's going to really depend on the funding environment that we have in any given year.
Right.
If I, if I may. The TOT, we historically split it four ways. The, those four different places it goes, I seem to expect it, and I continually have supported it going those ways, because that, that's, you know, good for the purposes of the TOT tax. But it's a general fund money. And so what she's saying is, we may get in a year where we're financially strapped. And so we're not going to write down, we're going to do that year in and year out at this time, because we aren't going to bind ourselves to the point where we can't pay for something else at that time. And it's subject to change by the next board, if this board approves it now.
And I understand that. I just want to make sure, in the environment that we talk about in the plan, that it's mentioned that for two cycles, that, that funding was granted. I didn't see that, I thought it was removed from the original draft that I had seen, because that funding section was different from the draft that I had, that I saw. So I just think it's an important backdrop to understand when we look, when we lay that foundation in the plan and talk about the environment, that for two years, that that TOT funds were allocated, that's how the master plan was paid for. It's a potential revenue force, revenue source going forward. Is it guaranteed? No. But it is a potential, but it's not listed in any of the potentials. And that's the part I don't understand.
It's under the Financial Action Plan. And on the board packet, I don't know, Autumn's trying to bring it up for me. It's on page, packet, page 705.
Okay.
And it discusses in different, in three different phases, as a potential, as Ben hit indicated.
Okay, good, okay, thank you. I looked at a different draft.
I don't think the board would go for two years, putting money into this to get to this point, and then just walk away from it. I don't think that's going to.
But that's what, you know, that's, the commission's like really, we're so excited. We're like, okay, we have some seed money that we can maybe get things off the ground. So it's an important piece for us, I just wanted to make sure it was mentioned.
It is important, and I think the former, I, I'm sure your new District Two supervisors in support of things like this, but the former District Two supervisor and I were the ones that really pushed hard and went for those. So at this time, it seems that there's people on the board that do support that.
And I appreciate that. I also wanted to mention that, as a part of going forward and making the Parks and Rec Commission more successful, being able to. Rec Commission more successful, being able to get more done, more productive, looking at grants for new parks in the districts where we don't have any parks, I think it would be very beneficial to have a supervisor on this commission. I, I would love to see that. I think the communication between the, the board and admin and the Parks and Rec Commission would be improved by the presence of a supervisor on our Parks and Rec Commission. I would love to see that added, as well as we look forward to improving Parks and Rec in Calaveras County as well. The, the last piece that I want to say is, Parks and Recreation in Calaveras County isn't just about physical facilities and parks. Say this again. It's about recreational programming. It's a huge piece that Calaveras County is lacking in compared to our neighboring counties, and it's the piece that I'm hoping that working with other agencies may solve. And I think it's a huge fill the need of childcare in our community if we have more programs that we can offer kids through recreational sports and activities. And I really want the commission and the board to focus on programming, recreational programming, not just new park facilities. And I'm hoping that our potential partnership and looking at resources with Amador County Recreation Agency might be a stepping stone to get us to improve our recreational program offerings for the county.
Thank you, Kate.
Okay, thanks.
And just for reference, it is on page 780 of my packet-
Okay, thank you very much.
-in the plan. Thank you.
I don't know. I don't.
That's the difference between the board packet and the other, and the public packet.
Public packet. Okay, so as this is, do we have any other public comment? I'll bring it back to the board for any further comment.
One more thing, in the packet, not your presentation, on page 733 and 734, Quinones Park says D1, should say D2, and Turner Park says D2, should say D1. So it's just-
I thought that was, I, I thought that had been fixed, so I'll definitely look at that again.
Just check that. Thank you.
It used to be District One.
Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was.
So it could have easily slipped over.
And on our, our GIS mapping, it's like right on the-
Someone put a lot of money on it, and then gave it to District.
And then District Two improved it more.
All the water, storage, and paying, and everything.
Supervisor Stopper?
Kate brought up recreational programming. I would love to add into this the idea of opening up motorsports with some special permits into the plan as recreational programming. I mean, more of that, you know.
Thank you. I, I finally would just like to say thank you for reaching out to ACR. I think that was really smart, and I think it's a smart way to go, and look forward to approving this next meeting.
Great.
With the addition.
With the additions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I do appreciate the work you did for us. I, I, I've been in favor of moving in this direction for quite some time. Kate, help the push in the beginning. There's a different part, commission, going then, but, you know, we've filled our ranks again, and this is really important to our community and the welfare of our kids in the future.
Thank you, and I just want to say it's been wonderful working with this whole community. They're so engaged and really care. It's been a lot of fun.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So we'll move on now to item number 18. Madam Clerk?
Item 18, information item, Administrative Office, receive a presentation from Amador Singer Center on the Meals on Wheels Program to residents of the county.
Okay, good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Calaveras County staff. Thank you for the privilege of being able to give you an update on the Meals on Wheels Program. As you recall, in the summer of '24, we came to you with a request for funding to help this vital program that helps a very vulnerable population within Calaveras County of older adults who are homebound. To qualify for the program, older adults must be 60 and above, just to remind you, and homebound, unable to drive and get out. So they're socially isolated and at risk. When I speak publicly, I ask the question, where would you like to take your final breath on earth? And almost universally, people say they'd like to be in their homes. Sadly, the statistics show that less than 25% of people will actually do that. But this program is meant to help them up those chances. It gives the opportunity for people to live independently as long as possible. It also affords them the ability to have a meal that is not only nutritious and designed for them, but also allows for the resourcing, such as the social connection from our driver, recommendations from our staff about further needs that we assess as we go into their homes twice a year, and contact them by phone twice a year, and have a conversation with them, so that we know what their needs are and can connect them to community resources that might help them to live independently as long as possible. So I wanted to bring for you an update in the middle of the year to sort of show you what your investment has done and what we've been able to accomplish mid-year. We were able to begin services July 1st without a gap in services at all to any clients as we assumed the program from Common Grounds Senior Services. So everything launched successfully, and we were very pleased with the assumption of the program and how it's performed. So there's a little misprint here. This is July 24 through February of this year, 2025. We were able to provide 16,310 meals to clients within Calaveras County, and we were able to utilize 61.74 volunteer hours. This is a little lower than I had hoped. I think we still would like to see more volunteers involved. And for those who might be tuning into this meeting and you're interested in volunteering, I wanted to give a brief overview of how we receive volunteer hours as reported here on this screen. We have an individual in Arnold who volunteers with our program, and he drives down to Murphy's and meets our driver. Those meals are handed off. He retains in his possession an insulated bag along with refrigeration and heating elements to keep the, the meals cold and at proper temp. And then he goes back up into Arnold and delivers to the clients that he's been assigned. So it's very simple. It doesn't require a trip over to Jackson to volunteer with this program. We make it very easy on individuals who are interested in investing in their community and helping their neighbors and friends with those types of supportive services. So in a sense, we provide the product, and we need people to step in and volunteer in those communities. It helps us to keep our operating costs lower. As we serve the county, you can imagine the travel distances from Jackson as food leaves, our fuel costs, our maintenance costs on equipment, as well as our personnel costs, which across the board, as the county is very well aware, are escalating. As fuel costs go up, labor costs continue to be driven upward, and people are seeing the inflationary costs that are, that are cutting into their budgets as well. In particular, back to the older adults that live in this county, they're experiencing these things at the same rate we are without the same increase in income to compensate for those things. So as they feel the pinch, demand for our services goes up, especially around food, and we could really use the help of volunteers in this area, who are just willing to pour into their community and serve, again, their neighbor. This individual in Arnold, we reimburse his mileage, so we help out there, because, again, it keeps our costs low, and he pours back into his community. He takes this to his, his friends and his neighbors, and he feels like he's supporting. I think in Arnold, there are around 12 clients who don't necessarily receive meals all the time, but it's around that. So you can imagine this volunteer spends about an hour a day per week on delivery because in Arnold, we would deliver once per week. So it's a pretty minimal investment of time for an individual who looks to support their community. To show you sort of the return costs and how we, we balance our budget and why we depend upon county funds, as the board so generously had allocated 15,000 toward this program, we received $6,352 during this time period from clients. We have a participant contribution request of $4 per meal. You can see this falls way short of that request. And so this equates to about 39 cents per meal as clients give toward the program. So you can see why we're dependent upon outside resources, such as county funds, to keep this program alive and going. And hopefully, you know, clients can give what they can. But just to remind the board, no client has refused services for their inability or unwillingness to contribute financially to the program. So we do support quite a few people who just financially cannot do anything, and we keep them living healthy. We launched in January our pet support program, which I talked to you about as a goal for this year, and we provide food and supplies and even some limited veterinary services to clients who apply for the program. It requires a separate application than the meal program itself. These are grant funds that are provided by PetSmart Charities through Meals on Wheels America, and it's a grant that we won for this fiscal year. We hope to receive it next year as well. And it allows us to provide these services to older adults and their pets so that they're not compromising their own nutritional needs for the needs of their pets. And it also gives that socially isolated older adult company at home, and if I were to ask, and I won't by a raise of hands, but most people who have pets talk to their pets, don't they? I wanted to also report to you that we just concluded a client survey, and we found that clients rated all aspects of the meal and quality of the service as either very good or good. We didn't receive any negative feedback, so we're very pleased to see that, particularly because we just took over the program. We wanted to see a very high quality of service, and we're committed to that. And then there was a little bit of opportunity for older adults to give some feedback, and so a couple of them wrote a couple of quotes there that you can see. "You are, you, you're all truly making a difference in the community" was one thing that a client wrote that makes, makes me happy to see. And then a final comment was, "I enjoy everything from the different foods to the volunteers and staff." It's truly a privilege to serve Calaveras County, as I'm a resident of Calaveras County, although I work in Jackson. This is very personal for me. As I've said before, these are my neighbors and friends, and so I'm very passionate about seeing this program continue to thrive in Calaveras County. And with that, are there any questions the board might have for me?
Supervisor Stopper?
Well, thank you, even being a Calaveras County resident, for working with our older generations and the, and providing the things that they need to stay healthy. And also thanks, thank Cal, I mean, Amador County for helping us, facilitating this. We appreciate it.
Supervisor Paulendorf?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Thank you. I see a lot of Facebook posts. People didn't realize that we shifted over to Amador, so I find myself posting and commenting a lot of the time to direct them to Amador. But I don't know, I'm glad this came today. I don't know if from the Calaveras County staff, we can post to redirect people to Amador because, you know, they've spent so long expecting the name in front of Calaveras and not Amador. But based on the Facebook post and comments, it seems like people are getting the message directed to contact your organization, but I still think it's, there needs to be some more messaging, or at least on our platform, to redirect them to Amador County. But I have seen, people are very happy with your service, from what I've heard, and thank you for coming and helping us out and being part of Calaveras County, not just living, but Amador Senior Services. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you for that. There, you bring up a good point about social media. I'm on there as much as I can with Nextdoor and Facebook. I can only do so much, but there is a lot of, I think, sometimes confusion around this, and it's, it's hard to get that clear message out, that not only has Amador Senior Center assumed the program, but also information around qualifying for the program. There was some interaction I had on Nextdoor with regard to a client who seemed incredibly dissatisfied that he was not receiving what he claimed to be a lack of response from Amador Senior Center around his request to be on the program. So I followed up with our program coordinator with, about this individual, and of course, I'm not satisfied as the CEO of the organization to find out somebody isn't getting through. And in following up with my program coordinator, she said, yes, I've had multiple conversations with him, they're under 60, and it's hard to get sometimes clients to understand they don't qualify for the program, and there's nothing we can do. So we try to take to social media as much as possible to clarify those things. Obviously, being here before you is helpful to that endeavor, and we just want people to know it's, it's not our unwillingness sometimes to serve, it's our inability due to the grant program because they don't qualify. Although they may be homebound and they may still have all of the qualifications, if they're not 60, they just don't qualify for the program. But thank you for helping us through social media and bringing clarity to any of your constituents. It's very helpful to us.
Supervisor Randall?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the population that isn't on social media. Like, can we reach our in-home health service workers or the people that are enrolled in that and have, you know, mailing it to them? You know, there's a lot of seniors that aren't on social media.
Yeah, so our program coordinator interacts with the hospital and also with, I know one social worker here in Calaveras County to continue to cultivate those potential clients.
Yeah, because those in-home health workers are going in the houses, you know, they're-
Yeah, and I, I mean, you bring up another good point, excuse me, in connection with the social media component. You know, we've spent years cultivating social media followers within Amador. That's a little more difficult just stepping into Calaveras, but I believe slowly, as people begin to follow us on Facebook or follow our posts through Instagram or Nextdoor, they'll begin to become familiar, and the more sharing, the better, then more following, and hopefully it snowballs. But, you know, we're, we're eight months into this, so, you know, I'm hopeful as time goes by, as we've seen in Amador, in rolling out services, more and more people will follow and find information.
And then, do you know where your gaps are for needing more volunteers?
So currently, as I reported, we have one volunteer in Arnold. We hoped, we hoped to be further along than that. We had been working with a potential volunteer in Copper as well as in Valley Springs, but they didn't pan out as far as their schedules and when we do deliveries. So it really just is an individual who, who feels like they want to contribute at some level between an hour to two hours per week, once per week, and finding out if it works with their schedule and, and timeframe for us to, to meet up with them and, and provide those, those meals. It's really not a huge investment of time.
So if we were to encounter somebody, we just have them contact you?
Absolutely, please.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stopper?
I was just going to say you can volunteer someone. I was, I was trying to get myself in trouble when I get home, so.
That's my idea.
I would just like to reiterate that when Common Grounds stopped and the RFP went out, I spoke to you several times, and you came on board to do half of our county, and then when an RFP didn't come in from the other side, we went back to you and you took all of Calaveras, and I just wanted to thank you for doing that because nobody else ponied up, and the service has been excellent, and we, I haven't heard anything about anybody dropping the ball. I wanted to ask you, though, are the conglomerate meals the same as the Meals on Wheels?
So the congregate meals are exactly the same. The exception is that in Amador, we serve meals hot through our Meals on Wheels Program because we're able to commit to that due to location with regard to our central kitchen. Providing hot meals to Calaveras is near impossible in that Area 12 agency on aging only gives us a two-hour window to deliver hot meals. We have an elongated window when it comes to frozen meals for obvious reasons. Temperature control is a big component of that. The Calaveras menu follows the Amador County menu by a week. So what Amador County is experiencing today as far as a meal choice will be available next Tuesday to Calaveras, so it trails by exactly a week.
Okay. I've had your meals at the Murphy's-
Oh, you have?
-Senior Center, and they're fantastic. So even heat it up again, they're, they're fantastic.
Yeah, well-
How did you get a meal?
I am over 60.
Yeah, but you're not homebound.
No, you, you're homebound for delivery, for-
For congregate program, anyone is welcome who's over 60. And I do want to emphasize that we do have Calaveras residents who, who access our center all the time-
Yes.
-who border the county border, and we, we provide those services to them. From West Point, we have folks that come from Valley Springs to eat at our- From West Point, we have folks that come from Valley Springs to eat at our center. And it's probably equal distance for them to come over to Calaveras or to Jackson. And they come over to Jackson, and we're fine to provide those services. Our grant monies don't distinguish when it comes to that. What limits us to be able to provide services in a certain county is Area 12's contract. So we're bound by county as far as where we go to serve, but where people access services, they can cross over boundaries to do that.
Is there any public comment? Brian.
Good morning. Brian Galicia, Calaveras County Veteran Service Officer. And we are definitely interested in getting any information you have available to help our veterans who could qualify for your program, as well as...
Susan Gleese, I'm the Program Manager of Adult Services. I know it's a resource we use frequently, so we would be happy to help you get that message out. We have meetings you could attend to help get that message out. We can create flyers, whatever you need.
Great. Let me get your card after this.
It's hers.
All right. We'll get connected. Absolutely.
So any other board comments, as this is an informational? Thank you so much, Chris.
Yeah, and thank you for supporting the program, and, you know, it's our hope that you'd continue to do so in the next fiscal year as well. But thank you for your support this year in making this possible. It's, as you can see in some of the financial reporting, it's essential that we have the funding to be able to continue to do this service.
I'll try to beat the drum for you for some volunteer work in my area. Hopefully, we can work with some of the people we know in the county and find some volunteers for you to help deliver that.
It will evolve. I am completely hopeful of that, and we're committed for the long term. This year was sort of an experiment for us with our board. Of course, I keep them in the loop of what's happening, but they seem very pleased. I haven't heard any negative that would in any way threaten services to Calaveras County. So it looks like we're going to continue through this RFP period and probably bid it the next time. So remain confident, we're here for the long term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Super, we'll move on to item number nineteen now.
Item nineteen, informational item, Administrative Office, receive a presentation from the Small Business Development Center Rural Minority Business Development Agency and California Office of the Small Business Advocate.
Sherry. Hi, Les, it's good to see you.
Oh, boy. You want to volunteer, Sherry?
No. I've done my volunteering.
I know. You're still a volunteer. You're still volunteering, and we appreciate it.
May we take a brief...
Yes, can we just take a five-minute break? Okay, we are back, and we are ready for our presentation on item number nineteen. Madam Clerk?
Informational item, Administrative Office, receive a presentation from the Small Business Development Center Rural Minority Business Development Agency and California Office of the Small Business Advocate.
Thank you. Sherry and Les, you're here.
Hi, nice to see you guys. Thank you so much. My name is Sherry Rouge, and I am the Director for the Rural MBDA here in Calaveras. I represent Amador, Calaveras, Alpine, and San Joaquin County, and then I have Les.
Les Vaughn, Dr. of the Small Business Development Center, and I have all the same counties.
And then Bob.
I'm Bob Adams, I'm the Central Valley Engagement Specialist for the California Office of the Small Business Advocate.
The down arrow, right?
Down arrow.
It's not going down or changing. You're gonna come touch it, and it'll work. Oh, okay. Thank you. Got it. Okay, so welcome to our presentation. We appreciate your time. We've been working tirelessly the last two years, three years, going and working with businesses in our county. So I started the Rural Minority Business Development Center in September of 2023 through a federal grant. We performed workshops and training to local businesses. We provided one-on-one technical assistance at no cost to businesses. The federal grant ended in September of 2024. In October of 2024, we received another grant from CALOSBA to continue our work in the rural areas. To date, we have reached two hundred and fifty-eight businesses throughout Calaveras and provided a hundred and ten one-on-one consultations with experts.
Oh, okay. I'm up, huh? Okay. Yeah, been involved for SBDC here for the last three years. Prior to that, I was an advisor for thirteen years. My mission was to have a presence in these counties, and we've done so tremendously. We hosted a number of workshops, a lot of presentations. I just secured an additional fifteen thousand dollars in funding for one-on-one advising, specifically for your region, which equates to about two hundred and thirty-eight additional hours that I've got to spend on one-on-one advising. And really, we're here to help, the SBDC is here to help your businesses grow and thrive. And I have great partnerships with Bob and Sherry because I believe in breaking down silos. And the way I operate is, I'll take some of the funding that MBDA has, right? I'll supplement with the funding that I have, and I steal money from Bob to actually implement programs. We also, I also meet with banks, and that's been what I've been doing a lot of lately, to find out what are some of the pain points for some of the people, residents, our businesses in this area as far as getting loans, right, or starting a business. So I find out for the banks, what are some of the pain points, and how can, as an SBDC, we overcome those pain points? So I tell the banks, if you have clients that don't understand financials, send them to me. I can help with the financials. If they don't qualify for a loan, send them to me. I will find a lender that can help them get that loan. And again, all of my services are totally free of charge to the businesses and the residents here because I steal some from Bob. I always partner up with Bob as we come up the hill to meet with businesses here and basically to protect myself because whenever he makes, Bob makes a presentation on the services that CALOSBA does, he says, if businesses need assistance, go see Les or go see Sherry because we are the voice to help businesses in your county. And again, it's totally free of charge. So, and we thank you for your support.
Yes, we do. All right, Bob, you're up.
So, thank you. So, yeah, my name's Bob Adams, Central Valley Rep for CALOSBA. And I want to thank them for our partnerships as well. I want you, I don't know if you've noticed or not, but I have been, we have been spending, Les and myself specifically, a lot of time in the rural counties, especially focusing on Amador, Calaveras, Tuolumne, Mariposa, Alpine, all the other collective counties in the region here. And the purpose is to let them know, let you know, because I tag you all, and I haven't gotten all of you, but as I move ahead here and I got some of the new names, I'll be tagging you to let you know that we, and we do it through LinkedIn. We tag you to let you know the businesses we visit, what we're trying to do, the education process we're providing them as it pertains to, you know, small business owners are going to be looking for capital at some point, whether they're looking for, you know, inventory supplies, whether they're looking for capital access to expand, whether they're looking for permits and licensing to expand locations, whatever it may be. Through California Office of the Small Business Advocate and California, through GoBiz as well, that's our umbrella, we're under them. We're here to make sure they have the democratization of capital that goes to small communities and underserved communities and folks who are looking to start, manage, and scale their businesses. And we have been coming up here and all the communities up here for the last year, I think, and really highlighting businesses and talking and educating them about the services we provide. Our office, in conjunction with the SBA, CALOSBA, other partners that work with the SBDCs, we fund over a hundred and fifty small business development centers, women business centers, veteran business outreach centers, and others throughout the state of California. And we want to make sure that these folks understand if they hit a bump in the road, I was, my ears perked up when I heard you guys talking about the, talking about the motor trucks. I immediately went into, man, what a great revenue thing that could be for the county, you know, each of the counties. I used to work as a NASCAR announcer. And so seeing the racing circuit develop up here, I can imagine that kind of a thing going on where you can get tons of people up here for those kinds of events. But, point being, if you have the entrepreneurs that are interested in pursuing those kinds of things, we help with the business plan, we help with the capital access, we help with the licenses and permitting process, we help with all those elements so that it takes the burden off of them if they don't have the experience in those roles to be able to be successful or more successful in making sure their businesses thrive and grow. So that's the purpose of what I'm doing up here. I made a commitment to Sherry and to Les too, and I'm making a commitment to this board and the other counties. I serve eleven counties, so for me, it's a little more difficult to hit every county, but I do it. I'm trying to get out, and I commit at least one day a month of being here in Calaveras County, Tuolumne County, Amador County, working with those folks so that we can educate and let folks know, they may not need anything from us right now. They may not need the advisors or anything going on right now, but there may become a point in the future where they do need that assistance. And for new entrepreneurs and new business owners that are starting out, it's good to have that advisor by their side that Les provides and that Sherry provides because they will probably get started, get their business plan in place, get their financing in place, get everything in the capital they need, and then they hit another bump in the road. So what do you do? You always surround yourself with people smarter than you are, right? From your accountants to your advisor from the SBDCs, from business partners, people who can assist you when you hit those bumps in the road to help lift you up and move you ahead in success. And that's what we're here for. No-cost advising, I don't like to use the word free because nothing's free, no-cost advising for folks that need that assistance, and our mantra is, don't go it alone. We're here to assist, and we're here to leverage our network, which we call the Scale Network, which is success, capitalized access, leadership for entrepreneurs, to help them start, manage, scale, and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just to give you some numbers, so the last cycle, we had a projected number of two hundred and fifty businesses. We hit three twenty-two. We served, serviced seventy-three businesses one-on-one. We had twenty-one networking events. We formed, which was new, forty-eight businesses, and we raised, we were able to loan out three million dollars. So we're busy. We're doing everything we can to help businesses, so, and I wish the young lady that was here had talked about needing help, that she was still here. But if you come across businesses that need anything, you all know how to find me, or you can connect with our local chambers, and they will find us, and we will do everything we can to wrap services around them to help them to become successful.
Yeah, we're all about business success. And my passion is, is we lose a lot of our youth and our local talent moving to the big cities, or in my case, San Joaquin County, moving over the hill. And what I try to do is try to build businesses with people that want to stay in our county, right, to stay in our city so they don't have to move elsewhere. So that's why I try to provide the best services I can to help their businesses grow, that they can stay where they are, you know, raise the families within the community and allow the community to grow. So we're very passionate about what we do. I don't think we do it for the money. We do it because we love what we do. We love helping the communities grow.
With Bob's money.
With Bob's money? Well, Bob's at SBA. SBA gives us some.
With your money. Supervisor Stoppard.
Well, thank you, because we wouldn't be here if we didn't love what we do.
No, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, most of the time.
We just want you to know that we're here to support the communities. We're coming up here to try to make a difference and be visible in the communities so people can say, oh, I've seen him before, I've talked to them, you know, working with folks here at the county too, with Sherry and others, you know, we want to make sure that they know they can, they can reach out to us anytime. You know, if they want to have a one-on-one meeting, we're up here once a month at least. I'll probably hear more than that. But so that they need assistance in any way, shape, or form, we can do one-on-one visits, get them involved, plus and his crew, so that they can get the right advisor, and we do that at no cost, and we're here to assist them so they can open the doors, have their grand openings, and start building a, helping to the community through it, so to keep them right there.
And I live here, so we're here.
Yeah, next week, we have a workshop on how to use Canva and AI in Canva, right? We've got...
Almost fifty.
Almost fifty people enroll. And then from there, we offer one-on-one advising, once they really want to get in-depth. And that's just one of the many workshops that we will be providing for the course of the year.
One more quick item, I think, very important for you folks especially, and that is Outsmart Disaster. We provide, our office has trained resiliency coordinators for Outsmart Disaster that we provide to communities at no cost. To come up here and do intensive training for Outsmart Disaster, getting them certified so they understand what they need to do prior to a disaster striking, flood, snow, fire, whatever it is, earthquake, we provide that training at no cost. It's an intensive program. Sherry, I know is right now working on developing that to offer here. And I know that we would want to offer that county-wide in each of the communities that you guys serve so that we can get business owners ready prior to an event strike, so they know their first steps, where they're going, what they're doing, and how it's going to, how they're going to react if an event happens.
Are you working with, are you coordinating with ROES? Sherry on that?
Not so far. Right now, I'm just working with CALOSBA, but if you can give me where to send that information to?
They're right down the hall, so I'll be able to figure it out.
Perfect. That'd be great.
And just a note, also, it's not there yet, but I do want to make this clear, that with that certification, our goal was to work with the Department of Insurance to eventually recognize that certification that businesses should receive to help with, to help with critical factors.
Now you're talking.
Yeah.
It's not there yet. I don't, I don't...
Good luck with that.
We want, we want that to be...
Insurance companies are, insurance companies are not usually much vending these days.
Supervisor Randall?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had a community member who is struggling to start up her small business, and I talked to Kathy Galina about it, and she directed me, and I directed her to you, and I hope she made it to you. I might email you, Sherry, and see if she landed with you or not.
I hope so, yeah.
And I would love more information as that Outsmart Disaster develops and maybe invite you to some community meetings.
Can do that.
Also, I'd love to talk to you, it was Forest Ranch, the lady that was here earlier, and her name is Covey. I believe her last name is Covey, but we'll...
Yeah, connect with me, because I'd love to help her out.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any other further comments?
Just thank you for being here and providing those services to our residents. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Not easy what you do.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question though, when you, when you, small business, small business, far as government concern, is 500 employees or less? Is that still, or 100 and less?
For the purposes of the state.
For the purpose of this, okay, that's what I want people to know.
Pretty much everyone qualifies.
Pretty much everyone would qualify, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 20, Madam Clerk.
Item 20, action item, administrative office, one, receive a presentation from the 39th Agricultural Association, two, make a public benefit finding, and three, receive, I mean, sorry, and three, approve appropriations from the PG&E settlement fund to the 39th Agricultural Association in the amount of $594,951.98. Requires a four-fifth vote of the board.
You don't need five minutes, do you, Stacy?
No.
I'm sorry, Mark.
It's here.
I was pre-looked, no, I, all right, all right.
She's a quick draw McGraw.
Good morning. Thank you, Stacy. We are here at, actually, your request. We have worked with our engineering partner, WGA, to create a hardening plan for the facility, which was really an amazing experience. It really was, and I would really encourage other public entities that serve in this way to go through this process, because you really see where your deficiencies are. And so I'm going to let Paul introduce himself, because I will butcher his last name, and then, in, with us is our Board President, Gabe Cowan, so.
Morning, Board. My name's Paul Fireball, I'm with Weber-Giehan Associates here in Santa Cruz. And our firm was tasked by the 39th Agricultural District, AKA the Fairgrounds, to prepare a planning-level document for recalling the hardening project. The purpose of this project is to strengthen the Fairgrounds' resiliency and preparedness as an evacuation center for people and livestock, and as a base camp for first responders during wildfire and other emergency situations. The report for this project is included in the agenda packet, and we've passed out updated construction costs, opinion of probable costs for the entire project, which you should have now. Okay, so aside from being the home of our beloved jumping frog Jubilee, the Fairgrounds has been used for decades as an evacuation center, most recently during the last year's arrow fire. The campus, campus provides refuge and essentials for residents, first responders, and animals in collaboration with the Red Cross and Calaveras Office of Emergency Services. The Fairgrounds offers an ideal space for a base camp due to spacious parking areas, equipment storage spaces, and its ideal location right on Highway 49. So from past experiences as an evacuation center, the Fairgrounds staff, in collaboration with Weber-Giehan Associates and A-Team Electrical, have identified several improvements that are essential to strengthening their ability to provide a safe and resilient environment and to improve operability. Among these improvements are power generation equipment, sewer collection system repairs, asphalt pavement repair and replacement, commercial refrigeration, livestock pens, hay barn, and portable light towers. Our top priority is electrical generation. There've been, you know, rolling blackouts with PG&E, and oftentimes during wildfires, the power will be shut down, and we need good reliable power sources for our central buildings, the Froggerteria, Mark Twain Hall, and the Administration Building. These will be receiving permanent standby generators, and we're also looking for portable generators for the Ranch House Complex and Becky Thatcher Hall. And then alongside these generators, we'd really, it would be really helpful to have portable light towers for nighttime operations, to help first responders, you know, be able to see, and not only that, but these can double as small portable generators, plug-in phones, and recharge batteries, or run power, you know, small equipment, power tools, and Second priority is the sewer collection system. We've recently installed a brand-new wastewater treatment facility on the Fairgrounds, and it's functioning now. We've, we've had startup the last few years, it's been running. However, the collection system, all the pipes and manholes that collect all of the wastewater are old and falling apart in some areas, and every time it rains, we get what's called INI, inflow and infiltration, that has required the use of the old wastewater pond as an emergency wastewater storage, because all that rainwater kind of overloads the treatment system, it can't make it, make its way out into the leach field area, and so it fills up the pond with 99% rainwater every time we get a big rain event. Asphalt pavement repairs, just for ease of access and improved traffic flow, we're looking to repair the majority of the asphalt pavement on the, on the Fairgrounds property. And then commercial refrigeration, the Fairgrounds does have some refrigeration on-site, however, when we have a big inflow of people and animals during the wildfires, we need additional refrigeration, not just for food, but for medical, veterinary and human medical, and vaccines and whatnot. Okay, on to animals. A huge inflow of all animals, big and small, come into the Fairgrounds during wildfires, horses, cows, donkeys, and then smaller animals like goats and sheep, and even some pets, chickens, you know, everything comes in there. And so while there are existing barns on-site, there's, there's a lot of pens already set up for the fair and whatnot, but this part of the project is going to be new customizable pens for, for large and small animals that will each have a water trough, and a hay barn to store hay safely and other feed without getting wet and damaged. And that's, that's our project, that's what we're looking for.
So, in, in doing this project, again, we did see some, really looked at our deficiencies, and, and power, as we know, during the fire in Copper was a huge thing, not having power at the Fairgrounds, and the Fairgrounds does have, in three of our sites, we do have the transfer switches that we got a grant for, we put those in, but just, you know, just being able to have the permanent generators there, where it would just be, you know, plug-and-play, would be super helpful. When we have a, you know, if there is a rolling, rolling blackout or a PS, P event with PG&E, and we don't have any power, we can't be a cooling center for our seniors, because there's no power at the Fairgrounds. And so often, we're called by county OES or the state OES, that they want us to open up as a cooling center, but without the correct power, we can't do that. And, you know, the animal, of course, you know, we're always housing animals, and we house animals not only in emergencies, but when the animal services here at the Fairgrounds, at the Fairgrounds, at the county, just doesn't have the space, you know, like 60 wild horses, you know, that kind of thing. 100 fighting clocks, that kind of thing. Awesome. Yeah, happened. Yeah, so, anyway, animal pens, and then, of course, the, you know, pavement is an ongoing thing, and, and you guys all know, I mean, the, the facility is very, very old, very old, and so we're like, we're dealing with a lot of really old antiquated plumbing, and the underground is not, is not good. So we are, again, looking for your help through the fire funds, knowing that it's not, will we be called again, it's when we will be called again, you know, because we've been for floods, you know, we were, we had a convalescent home at the Fairgrounds a couple of Januaries ago, out of Valley Springs, because there was a flooding issue, and so we moved them into Mark Twain Hall, so we're just, we're just asking, asking for your help, and, and WGA has done an amazing job and has been an amazing partner, and it helps that they love the fair, and they love the Fairgrounds, and they see the value, you know. One reason why we are so valuable as an emergency evacuation center is because people come to the fair. There's a comfort level, it feels safe to them, for them to come to the fair for emergency services, and so we would, ooh, I could put that on, we would like to continue doing the best we can and serving the best we can, and so we do need to make some improvements in order to do that. Is there any questions? If it's about any of the engineering, him. Anything warm and fuzzy, me.
I have a lot of questions and statements, so, real, real quick with the sewer system.
Yeah.
You know, you, you realize how much INI you're getting in just by the volume, by the volume. Beyond any smoke testing, have you done an INI study that run? I would like to hear what your results are on the INI study.
Yeah, absolutely. So part of the wastewater project, we installed a flow meter in the manhole just upstream of the treatment facility, so we know exactly how much water is coming in, and we track that and compare it against, every time there's a major rain event, we'll compare the, the flow. So especially when there's no fair going on, there's very low flow, there's almost nothing coming in, and every time it rains, even though there's no event going on at the fair, here comes a big flow, and we can even look at the quality of water, the clarity of it, and, and we can see that.
Well, we understand how INI works, but when you do an INI study, you do more than one flow meter, you do it throughout the system, and that tells you where you're getting your infiltration at, so you don't just put a price tag on replacing the entire system when it doesn't need to be entirely replaced.
Yeah, that's a really good point. We, we have only one flow meter right now, and part of the problem is, it's a very complex system, there are a lot of buildings on campus, it's hard to pinpoint where a good location would be. However, we have gone out during a rain event and opened up manholes, we can actually see the flow, and we can track it walking upstream from the treatment facility, popping every manhole lid as we go upstream, and seeing, okay, there's not much coming in right here, so that branch is probably okay, but there's a lot coming in right here, and so let's focus here, and every time we go upstream, we get a little bit more information, it's not, it's not.
Right, no, no, you're absolutely right, that's a good way to go, and then follow up with a camera next time, and, I mean, you can rent one from United Rentals, I'm just saying, that way, you can focus in on areas instead of putting a price tag on something that doesn't necessarily need to be replaced in certain situations. But that, that's fine, beyond the point, I'm totally in favor of helping out with this. I'm interested in, more so in the power, bringing that up to par for an EOC or any type of event, you said it perfectly, Jeanne.
Lori.
Lori, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
It's been a god week for me. I'm sorry, Lori.
That's okay.
But, yeah, I'm interested in helping out with this. The intentions, as always with the PG&E funds, since we originally set these forward in 2019, I believe, was for this type of thing, you know, and so moving forward with the power generation for EOC and stuff like that is something high on my list for helping out with, because, you know, some of the other things, it's, like pavement, I know it needs to be done, state-owned property, but it doesn't necessarily coincide with providing redundancy in those type of services, although it did get broken down during the big fire from all the people being out there, I understand that, but they get a lot of traffic out there at least once a year, anyway. But, I understand, you know, we don't have all the money for all of it, so my priority for helping out is more towards.
I would, I think, I would think I would agree as far as prioritization goes, power is number one.
Yes.
I would say that sewer is number two.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm open to those, I'm completely, that's all, that's all I got.
Any other questions? Supervisor Stoppard?
No, I, I think this is a good presentation and everything you need, obviously, we don't have that kind of money, $2 million, $2.5 million that you're projecting here, but the funds that are available that we're asking for here, I'm more than happy to give that, because you do, when we have disasters, you've always taken in. And then, how you spend it, I think that's up to you, what your priorities are, I'm in agreement with electrical and sewer, but if you have other priorities you think comes into place, I'm, I'm fine with that. You guys are the experts, you're the ones that are out there.
I, I would say that electrical is our, our biggest need, because everything else kind of flows from that. We are working on the INI ourselves, we have isolated some, the first aid buildings and some other areas where we've done our own kind of excavating, ditching, we just put a culvert in, so we've been working on that, because with their help, this plan, all the work we've been doing for five years on the sewer system, know more about that than I ever thought I would, we have been able to, you know, do a lot of that work ourself, and our new system that, you know, was, was, we got a grant for and you guys helped fund, that, that system is working like it's supposed to. So, you know, with an old facility, and I always say that the geography of the Fairgrounds is our, it's our charm and our curse, because we have these rolling foothills, and we have these bottoms, and it's the only property, I think, where you can walk to the end of the property going uphill, and when you come back, you have to go uphill. There's never no downhill, I don't know how that works, but that's the Fairgrounds, so, yeah, anyway, and Amanda will learn that more with a stroller this year. It's really fun with a stroller.
Chair Hubbard, just for clarification for the Board, the way this item is set up is that we would actually be setting aside appropriations for the Fairgrounds, then they would bring the priority projects back for board approval on a reimbursement basis. So I just wanted to make that clarification, that we're not actually just issuing a check that it would be based on the projects that they bring forward.
Thank you.
But either way, they would be bringing back the projects they think is, they need out of this appropriations of this money, so, yeah.
Could I just ask, what is the lifespan of this equipment that we're purchasing?
Oh, great question. Yeah, let's, let's see, go down the list. Generators, depends on.
The emissions laws are changing.
Depends how often they need to be used, obviously, they're exercised occasionally just to keep them up and running, but 20, 25 years. Transfer switches, similar lifespan, similar to, to most any, you know, electrical system on, on a house or a building. Sewer collection system repairs, 50 to 100 years. Asphalt paving, how long has that asphalt been there? 50 years?
I mean.
Typically, asphalt is designed for 10 to 20 years lifespan. Refrigerators, I'm not really sure, maybe, maybe 20 years. Livestock pens.
Forever.
Forever, until they rest, yeah.
No, we still use them when they rest.
We still use them, yeah. Yeah, hay barns, it depends what, what kind of hay barn we end up putting in, but most likely metal. end up putting in. But most likely metal building, I'll say 50 years for that, too.
My, my concern is about the process, if I can just address that. What, what are, what Teresa just said is, we don't have that kind of cash flow where we can go spend $500,000 on generators and then ask you guys to reimburse us. That's just, that's reality. So I don't know how to do that.
So I think that when you have an identified project, if you bring it forward to the board and it has an actual identified bid, then the board at that time could choose to allocate the funding upfront for the project.
Perfect. That makes sense. Thank you.
It, it's just like last time, when you end up getting the grant from the state, that you were able to use our money to fund the projects because they gave you the money back. So we're, we're willing to give you the money before you actually need to spend it, as long as you come forward with the plan.
So basically, I mean, the plan's set out there. So what you're looking for is the invoices or potential bids for the cost of the generators. Get on the agenda again, come back again and talk about the generators.
Well, yeah, but you're going to have to go through a contractor because they're going to have to install transfer switch and everything and do it all.
We have those, but yeah.
Yeah, so, but, so they'll, they'll have that total cost in with the bid.
That's why we have.
Exactly.
That's why we have Paul.
And admin to be able to get it on the agenda.
So administration would, would put it on the agenda. If you get your actual costs from the contractor with the contract that you have with the contractor, there wouldn't really be a need to do a presentation at that point because that's something that the board is now approving that we like these projects. We're setting aside this money for it. We would probably just put it on consent at that point.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Is there any public comment regarding this item? Ms. Callen? Thank you. Any other for the board comment?
I'll move this item.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 21, can we take like an hour, lunch break now?
So mean. Brian, he's pulling your leg. We're ready. We're going on to item number, what did I do? 19.
21. 21 informational item, adult services, receive a semi annual report from the county veteran services office.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chair Hubbard, Honorable Board, I am Brian Galicia. I am the Calaveras County Veteran Service Officer, and I am here to present my semi annual report to you. Gonna start with just saying that we present this every, about every six months to kind of give you an idea of what the office is doing and the impact it's having on our veteran community in Calaveras County. Before you, I did provide a copy of the annual report from the California Association of County Veteran Service Officers. It is presented every year for your reference. So the first thing we have is the work that we did in comparison to three of the smaller counties in our area. We, we served in fiscal year 2023, '24 approximately 20, almost 2,200 veterans or family members, either by phone or in person or by email. We submitted 1,082 claims, new claims, which netted, net awards of $3,518 and $329, sorry. And that is new federal money coming into the economy of the county. The average new award obtained was $3,252. And just as a note, statewide, last year, county veteran service officers was able to obtain over $570 million in federal benefits to the veterans of this, of this state. The, as I mentioned, we secured over $3.5 million in new awards and based on the $184,025.72 of general fund contribution to the operation of the office, that in yielded a, an investment, a return of about $19.12 per dollar spent. So we're, that's an increase of over $6 from last year. So we're, we're doing the right thing here. As far as new lifetime progression, as far as our benefits, last year we were a little over 8 million. Now we're over 10 ongoing. This does account for a 5% death rate amongst veterans whose benefits then stop. As far as our local statistics, this is from January, or I'm sorry, July 1st through December 31st for the first six months of this current fiscal year. I do have to apologize, the total contacts is off. The actual amount is 1,271 total contacts in this first six months, either by phone or by in-person visits. We had an outreach event at the, during the holidays with the Angels Camp Veterans Memorial District. We had a booth set up wherein they were giving out the vouchers for their, their holiday meal programs. And that netted us 53 new contacts at that outreach event. We've submitted over 400 claims in this first six months for 185 different veterans. 212 of those were for compensation type claims, monetary claims, 21 already awarded, 50 healthcare enrollments, VA healthcare. And the awards that we received during that six months, retroactively, it's almost $700,000. And new monthly awards is 83 for 21, 87. We've processed 10 college fee waivers with a monetary value of $84,950 for our disabled veterans dependents. The Veteran Service Office is currently comprised of three full-time employees. Myself is the Veteran Service Officer, a Veteran Service Representative who is still not, who is not accredited as of yet, but will be within the next couple of months. That would be Ryan Casperson, a newly hired Veterans Outreach Coordinator, Maggie March, who I, who I would like to congratulate on her retirement from the U.S. Army with 21 years of active duty. We also have a part-time employee, our office technician, Don Emmons. And we have an extra hire who's also doing our program coordination. He is running our peer support groups, which is a very important program in our office. Our future goal is community support. We continue to host two, two of those veteran support groups, twice monthly, one in Murphy's, one in Valley Springs. We are working to establish a group for women's veterans. We have tried twice before with little or no participation. So we are going to be reaching out to the women's veterans community in Calaveras County and see what we can do to make a group happen. With our new outreach coordinator, we aim to increase our community presence and strengthen the partnerships that we have with other veteran service organizations within the county. One of the biggest issues we have is the transportation gap because as many of our veterans are, are aged, they no longer drive or their disability is so severe that they can't even barely get out of the house. There are some programs available. The VA has a at-home primary care program where the doctor actually comes to their house for their appointments. But it's limited, only one clinic is providing that as of right now. We have our Veterans Volunteer Program, which, thanks to the West Calaveras Rotary Club's donation, we have the money to reimburse volunteers. We had our first, we have one volunteer right now. And he was able to take a blind veteran to a medical appointment and get him home safely. And we were able to reimburse him for that mileage. And so our biggest issue right now is we need more volunteers because this is a critical service. And there are more than just one person that needs these rides to medical appointments. And it's not just confined to medical appointments. Some can't even get to the grocery store to buy food because they don't have anybody in the area that, or family members, or anybody that regularly checks on them. So that is something that we're looking to hopefully alleviate with the program as we get more volunteers. Supervisor Toffenel is, is assisting with getting the word out in Valley Springs area, and we appreciate that. And we will be putting more information on our Facebook page again and trying to get it out to the public as much as we can. One, I would like to read one statement, as I normally do, that's of importance.
Your cognitive vortex.
Yeah. So the PACT Act of 2022 has significantly increased the number of claims filed for veterans' benefits within the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. As a result, hundreds of unaccredited for-profit companies are making hundreds of millions of dollars helping veterans file disability claims illegally. We call them claim sharks. These sharks are offering veterans and/or their families false hope by telling them they can get claims done better and faster if they pay for it. Sometimes this equates to $10,000 or $20,000. Some sharks will provide low-level free advice to gain the trust of the veteran, and then they sign up and are then required to pay. The sharks sometimes will file a claim knowing the veteran or the family member doesn't qualify for the disability program and still require payment. According to 38 United States Code 5901, no, excuse me, no individual may act as an agent or attorney in the preparation, presentation or prosecution of any claim under laws administered, administered by the secretary unless such individual has been recognized for such purposes by the secretary. Section 5902 continues, it also states, no individual shall be recognized under this section unless the individual has certified to the secretary that no fee or compensation of any nature will be charged any individual for services rendered in connection with any claim. The services we provide at the Calaveras Veteran Service Office are free of charge and all claims are worked and submitted by Department of Veterans, to Department of Veterans Affairs by a VA accredited claims representative. This is also true with, of many organizations like the American Legion, the VFW, and DAV, Disabled American Veterans. My advice to any veteran or family member seeking to submit a claim using a representative is to ask them if they are accredited by the VA. Anyone can search any name to see if anyone is an accredited representative by using, visiting va.gov and searching on OGC accreditation search. If the person you are searching does not return results, they are not accredited by the VA to prepare, present, or prosecute claims of any kind. We at the Calaveras County Veteran Service Officer, or Office are more than happy to answer any questions veterans or families have, even if they are not working with us. Thank you.
Of course. Speak again. But thank, thank you very much for the work you do. High percentage per capita of veterans in Calaveras County, one of the highest percentages per capita that I know of.
Yeah.
And we value what every one of them sacrificed. And a lot of them have sacrificed a lot needing these services.
Yes.
Post being, being signed up. So just as we move forward, from what I'm seeing here is no place in the federal government is necessarily safe right now when it comes to what money's going where. I, as one, as a supervisor, value these services, value the opportunity to be where I'm at because of what those gentlemen have done in the past so that we could remain, remain living the way we are. So if you see anything coming down the turnpike that may inhibit you, generally, we don't try backfilling federal dollars, but maybe we can work with you, bring it to us, don't, be proactive.
I will.
So, so that we can possibly work with who, whatever we need to do to continue to provide these services if we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, any, as far as our funding goes, we don't receive any funding from the federal government for our operation. It's, we get a little bit from the state.
Yeah, but some of these services that they're receiving.
Yes, absolutely.
And that concerns me.
Yeah.
Until it happens, it's just a concern. But, you know, and it's more than probable that's beyond our means to be able to backfill in things like that. For the same time, we might be able to work with the state or someone else to make sure that it gets done.
That would be awesome.
Supervisor Fulmer?
I'm gonna echo what Ben said. In speaking with former coworkers that actually work with the VA down in Palo Alto, I am extremely concerned with what I am hearing coming out of what's going on for not just medical, but just social, from a social worker side point of what the VA provides, that these veterans are going to be falling through the cracks here soon. And so I, to Ben's point, you know, what we, we may not be able to fill what normally the federal government provides, but maybe we can see what other, we just had, you know, meals on wheels here, you know, what do we have in this county that we can help bridge those gaps as we see what's coming down the pipe? Because it is not pretty. And I'm not thrilled to see what is going on at the federal level. It's really disappointing, especially when it comes to our veterans and even active military personnel and everything.
Just wanted to say thank you. And I've met Brian and Cody and Don, and welcome. Are you all open to coming to like up country or anywhere on like outreach events and meeting veterans out in the community? You know, like our Legion posts and different events that we have?
We, so last, last April, we had a meeting of all the veteran service organizations, the VFWs, the American Legions, anyone else who wanted to come. And our goal was to begin, we started by calling to the Veterans Coalition, but the group hasn't decided if that's something they want to take on as a continuance. But our goal is to find ways for us all to work together to better serve the veterans in our, in our communities. We're having, there's a few little bumps here and there. We've had two meetings. We do it every six months. And our next one is actually the 31st of this month in Valley Springs. So we're going to be putting that together. We have, we have reached out to all of the organizations in Calaveras County. And not all of them had representative. But we, we would love to have some, we would love to have people from those, every agency to come and, and meet with us and let's talk. I mean, I'm open to individual meetings to discuss some of the things that sometimes we're requested to do. we're requested to do things that we are not allowed to do. By, under the California Military and Veterans Code, we are at your mercy as far as what we are allowed to do. We're, but we do, we do try to do things outside of that as best we can with the resources that we have. Now, we can't, unfortunately, we can't, we have a veteran that's homeless all of a sudden. We don't have the funds to put them up. We work with our Housing Department to try to get them into something that's sustainable, at least for a little bit, and they have also programs they may qualify for, for long term. So, but we are looking forward to working with anyone who wants to come work with us and move forward.
And I've heard really positive feedback out of that group. I know you missed the last meeting, but in talking to other veteran district board members, they have been really pleased and all happy that the county has done that, and because even between themselves, I think they're trying to solve some problems. There are areas in this county that aren't within a veteran district, and some are picking up that slack to provide those services, even though they're not technically in their district. And so it's, I think they've been, what the county can't provide, they've been trying to work within themselves. And I think they, a lot of them, the biggest feedback is, I didn't know, phone show, and, you know, just that connection alone has, I think, really done a lot in the last year. So thank you for continuing to have those meetings.
Yeah, I did miss, I was couldn't meet that last meeting. The first one went very well. So send me the invite for this one coming up.
I'll make sure.
And anyone else is welcome to attend if you're interested in listening to what we're,
what we're trying to plan and trying to do. So I will say one other thing about the claim sharks. The association that prints out the annual report will be, through our lobbyists, supporting a bill that I believe Senator Archileta is going to be putting out to restrict claim sharks from operating in California, just so you're aware. And there may come a time where they'll send something out for me to send to you to request your support of that bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding this item?
Hi. I think we're officially in the afternoon, so good afternoon again. Susan Gleese, I'm the Program Manager of Adult Services, and as many of you know, veterans kind of falls under that umbrella. I just want to say thank you to Brian and his team for the work that they do. We work, we're very integrated. We work closely with our adult protective services team to always try to fill in gaps, work together. We have a lot of the same clients. And Brian and his team, you know, they're, they're very passionate about the population that they serve. They work hard. They're a small unit. And so maybe, basically just recognizing the work that they do, so I appreciate that you guys really support the work that they do. I'm a daughter of a veteran. My brother's a veteran, so not only professionally, but personally, I see both sides of it. So again, thank you to our veteran team. Thank you guys for supporting them, so it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. So as this is an informational item, we'll say thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for the board. So we have three items left. We have the library, we have the Colombo Building, and we have the control list for the Public Works. Okay, great. Because it's estimated to be 15 minutes. I think we can get it done in a half an hour. Come on, Ben, we can do it.
We already hired people.
Yeah, let's do it. Okay. Let's make this happen. Madam Clerk, can we read item number 22?
Resolution, Library, one, conduct, one, conduct a public hearing, two, make a public benefit finding, three, adopt a resolution rescinding all prior library fee resolutions and schedules, adding new fines and charges, amending other penalties and charges, rescinding overdue fines on all adults, childrens, and young adult materials except electronics, and four, authorize the fine amnesty effective April 1, 2025, declare all existing library fines.
Thank you, and I'm opening a public hearing. Jesse.
Good morning, or afternoon. I'm Jessie Sprague, the County Librarian. I'm here to talk today primarily about the overdue fines, and we'll be talking about much smaller denominations than everybody else today. So first, I want to say, state that, as you guys know, the mission of the library is to provide informational resources to the community free of charge. For this reason, libraries view fines as a lever, a practical tool to incentivize the timely return of materials, not as punitive, not as a money-making factor. In fact, we're unable to earn money through any sort of fines and fees for the library. However, over the last really four or five decades, libraries have started to realize these are not the most practical way to go about it. For one thing, they de-incentivize use of the library by small families. Small children desperately need the access to the materials that will provide and build pre-literacy skills, and beginning readers need access to a wide variety of reading materials to build their love of reading and to build on their literacy skills. Because of this, families with small children check out a large quantity of items, and even keeping them out a couple of days can lead to overdue fines racking up fairly quickly. So it decreases circulation, it de-incentivizes use of the library by the people we want to use it the most, and studies have shown it really doesn't actually get the materials back any quicker. So most libraries have gone the route of, instead, when an item goes overdue for more than a week, simply blocking that patron's account until the item's returned. That keeps them from checking out and keeping out more items. It incentivizes the return of the books, and that lost, and that block is reversed when the items are brought back, and it doesn't unduly put a burden on families with a lot of children or with small children. Another thing is, like I said, we're talking about small denominations. The total anticipated overdue fine revenue for this fiscal year is $5,000, which was .057% of the library's budget. In 2018, Livermore Library did a study about their overdue fines and found that they spent more money and staff time processing the fines than they actually took in in overdue fines. In 1967, Alameda County Library commissioned a third party to do a study on their overdue fines, and the third party found on all counts the library should, for practical reasons, get rid of overdue fines. I found this highly amusing when I was working for them because I discovered it as I was classifying their historical documents in 2022, right after they finally followed that recommendation to get rid of their overdue fines over 50 years later. Libraries all over the state and country are moving in this direction. Most recently, in our area, El Dorado Hills got rid of their overdue fines as of December of 2024. So for the, the getting rid of all previous fines and adding new fines, that largely just has to do with, as we were looking into this and going back and identifying where all the fines were established, we could find mention of most of the fines, mention of resolutions where they were passed, but there wasn't a clear place where we could locate all of that information and put it in one area. So this is more of a housekeeping thing to go back and just resend all of those and establish them all in one place, so there's a very clear place direct back to where the library fines and fees are established. However, with the exception of requesting the removal of daily overdue fines, there's very little changes to the fee schedules as they were given to you guys. And then finally, authorizing a fine amnesty is really primarily a housekeeping measure. To briefly summarize, the library ILS, which is what I like to call the library brain, it's where all the book records for all of the books the library holds are collected. It's over 150,000 items, and ours is actually considered fairly small on a library scale. There's also around 20, 10 to 20,000 patron records. This is where the staff catalog the materials, retrieve them, and the mirror side of that is the public-facing catalog that patrons search. You do need to keep that in good order. In our system, anytime there's an overdue fine attached to a patron, we can't get rid of that patron's record, even if the patron's been dead for 20 years. If there's an overdue fine attached or associated with a book, you can't get rid of that book record, even if it's been missing since 2004. I currently have over 6,000 items in our collection that have been discarded since prior to 2010 that I can't get rid of because of historical fines that sometimes range from 20 to 50 cents, but because they're associated with those records, they're there. I estimate between 10 to 20,000 books in the collection, or somewhere over 15% of the collection are ghost records, they're not actually things we own. And library software, including the ILS, is priced by usage tiers, which includes factors like size of the collection and number of patrons. So when we artificially inflate those numbers by records that are no longer relevant, we put ourselves into higher pricing tiers. And so for basically housekeeping reasons, I want to do a one-time fine amnesty to clear all of those fines and clear out all of those irrelevant records, and, you know, make sure we're in the correct pricing tiers, and also it makes the catalogs easier to search. When you look for Harry Potter, you're not seeing 15 discarded items and then one item the library actually owns. That's not what we want our patrons to see. So that is the primary, and then the, the added positive effect is it also makes a good marketing tool to tell patrons that we have gotten rid of not just our overdue fines, but we've wiped all previous fines, invite them back into the library just in time for summer reading, and try to reverse that disincentivation that we've been doing to let people know that, you know, the library is even easier to access without the fear of the overdue fines, and that if they have a 10-year-old fine from, you know, when they were 15, that fine is now gone, and come back in and renew your library card.
Supervisor Stoppard?
There goes your 20 minutes.
I was going to say.
But, but, thank you. You know, it's, you're passionate about it. All the information's pertinent. You've done your homework. You had me at get rid of the fines.
I was hoping, but I didn't want to take a chance.
Any other questions? Could I ask?
Yeah.
Are any of the materials that have, that we don't have anymore, will you have to replace any of those?
So for really old materials, we wouldn't want them back if they brought them back now anyways.
That was my second question you didn't answer, so thank you.
A lot of times, even if it's a book that would be considered still relevant, like a 30-year-old copy of John Grisham's The Firm, it's going to be in such horrible condition at this point, and that edition's no longer going to be in print, and we're going to need to re-catalog it on a new record.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not worth it.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this item?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public session and bring it over.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry I didn't catch this in the resolution before. There's a clerical error that needs to be corrected. On the resolution, in number five, the fine amnesty should be April 1, 2025, so that May 10 date should be changed to April 1, and then in item six, the April 1 date should be changed to May 10. I had them reversed in the resolution. He's correcting.
Mr. Haverde, I make a motion to those. Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to item number 23.
Item 23, Agreement Administrative Office, one, fine exempt from SEQA, two, authorize the board chair to sign the purchase and sale agreement with Colombo Calaveras LLC for the county's purchase of real property located at 23 East St. Charles Street, San Andreas, for office space at the, at a purchase price of $2,400,000 plus fees using probation funding sources. Three, authorize the county executive officer or designate to execute the certificate of acceptance and any additional documents needed to facilitate the purchase. And four, approve the budget transfer associated with the purchase of the Colombo Building requires a four-fifth vote of the board.
Thank you. Marcos.
Good afternoon.
You, you've got me already, Marcos.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Marcos Munoz, Assistant CEO. I am here this morning seeking approval to purchase real property here in San Andreas, known as the Colombo Building for $2.4 million, utilizing probation funding sources. The county has occupied the building since 2008. The annual rent for 2025 is $243,000. Historically, the rent has primarily been paid by general fund dollars. The purchase would result in a overall estimated annual savings for the general fund of about $170,000.
Fantastic. Everything board comments? Supervisor Toffanelli?
Good job, Marcos, on your negotiations. You hung tough, and from where they started at, where we ended up, good job.
Any other comments? Do we have any public comment? Jim, do you want to say anything? Thank you. That'll bring it back to the board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Marcos.
I guess, you know.
I think we have a hungry board. We'll move on now to the last item on our agenda. Item number 24.
Item 24, Resolution Human Resources, adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list within the Public Works Department.
Ms. Hawkins?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair Haverde, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources Risk Director. And so I am bringing back to you today the requested changes within our Public Works Department. We did ask our interim Public Works Director to review the structure of the department and make sure we had the appropriate employees and the appropriate classifications. There were requests for reclasses. We had asked, are these the appropriate reclasses? And so our interim Public Works Director did work with staff, took his time to make sure he understood what work the employees were performing, and then worked with Human Resources to review job descriptions, to see if there was a job description that fit better the, the essential duties of the employee. And so we identified where there changes needed to be made. We also identified where there were kind of duplication of efforts, and so it, it was recommended that we do eliminate some of the positions. And with the changes that we made, we really cleaned up the org chart. The flow of work made more sense and would bring efficiencies to the department. And so that's why we are requesting the reclassifications of an administrative assistant two to a senior accounting tech, an administrative services officer to an accounting tech two, a public works analyst one-two to public works projects analyst one-two. That is only a change in title and job description, which better clarifies the duties of the position and, once again, expectations workflow. And then with the changes to the public works analyst position, we had a public works analyst in development services that the job description no longer fit what she was doing. And so once again, I worked with the interim Public Works Director to identify the appropriate classification, and then we worked on the job description, worked with the unions, and then we were able to come to an agreement. The position does not have a new salary, and so the employee will remain at the same salary rate. We also have a public works analyst two, to a, or I did already bring up the senior inspector. And so with looking at the job duties that the public works analyst was doing within the inspections, there were big holes in the job description, and so that's why we identified, also looked at what similar positions were doing and made sure we had the appropriate duties assigned to it. Now, through this process, we had, we identified positions that were, we were overstaffed in, so we are asking for the elimination of an administrative, administrative assistant one-two. We do have a position that that person will be transferring into and will not cause any change in salary. We also have another administrative assistant one-two that we are working on identifying a position for that person, a public works inspector one-two, which is vacant, and then a public works projects administrator position, which this employee will be allowed to exercise bumping rights as afforded to them in their MOU. We have worked with the unions through all of this, and we have come to an agreement. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Is there any public comment regarding this? Andrea?
Hi, good afternoon. We have an agreement. I guess the comment I wanted to say is it didn't have to be this hard. It really didn't. We can do hard things, right? We did come to an agreement. I want to say thank you to Micah, Mr. Martin, and Teresa, you've been instrumental in this. But we need to be approached with honesty of intentions. We need to be viewed as labor partners in this process from the beginning. We need to be viewed as labor partners in this process from the beginning. And if that had happened, this would have probably been quicker. And it would have saved a lot of sleepless nights and anxiety from those affected by this process. But hopefully, we've learned from this and, and that we can move forward in a positive fashion from now on. Because this is, I'm sure, especially with everything that's going on in our country and world, this is not the last hard thing that we're gonna be facing in the future. So approach us with integrity, approach us with honesty of intention, and view us as equal labor partners as we move forward. And we'll continue to address these hard things, and we'll get them done.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Just a couple, couple things. I know for me as one, and I, you know, in my experience with the rest of the board, we intend to work forward in good faith, as always. And, you know, and just over the years, working with you, Andrea, you know that a majority of us, if not all of us, are, you know, have good intentions and intend to work that way with you. So just as we move forward, I thank you for doing all the extra work. We've already discussed earlier today about bringing this forward with the budget in the future so that, you know, we have an idea of, in full clarity of what we're voting on and everything. So I think that's good. I'm glad, from what I understand, everyone's receptive to it. So thank you very much for that. And just, I'm gonna keep my eyes on it. I just want everyone to follow the process and everyone to get to the point they need to be, at the time they need to be at that point as we move forward. If there's no other board questions or anything, I'm willing to move to the side.
Do we have a second? One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to supervisor announcements.
Doug, can I catch you real quick after this?
Don't be rough.
Okay, thank you.
In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Supervisor Stoppa, I'll start with you.
Last, but not first.
Mike?
He doesn't not say anything.
I just want to announce I'll be in much better spirits going to lunch now.
Supervisor Pavanelli.
Amanda, you have your apples back. Thank you. I didn't bruise them. I have nothing to report.
Supervisor Follendorf.
Yes, I do. For those of you that may or want to consider using the Saturday Hopper that kicks off this week with, right, yeah, this Saturday with IES. Yeah, got my dates mixed up. So Saturday Hoppers is officially on. And then tomorrow, I will be testifying on a panel in front of the Assembly Health Committee on California Land Use. And I would like to thank the Planning Department and Teresa for helping me get prepared for tomorrow on behalf of OES.
Supervisor Andel.
On Friday, last Friday, March 7, I attended the first five Calaveras Children and Family Commission meeting. A lot of great stuff happening amongst that group. And that evening, Friday, March 7, I attended the Mountain Ranch Community Club event and brought Eric Holt along. And he shared about OES and fire prevention and Everbridge. And it was very well received with the community. So thank you to Eric for coming up.
Thank you. And I'll report that on the 5th and 6th of last week, we hosted the Sierra Nevada Conservancy here. And I wanted to thank our CEO for tagging along in a very rainy atmosphere, without an umbrella, to tour a lot of the work that the Sierra Nevada Conservancy has done. We also hosted the reception afterwards and then the board meeting on the 6th. And that's it. So Madam CEO, do you have anything?
I do not.
Counsel? Madam Clerk?
No.
Susan?
Actually, yes.
I'd just like to let you know, if you want to know more about what goes on at the Amador Senior Center, there is a show on YouTube right now on our channel. You can watch.
Thank you. Well, with that, we will adjourn at 12:25. And then we did it in 20 minutes. So thank you all. Good luck, I get it. I'm getting it.
Record.
It was, it was 12. It was 20. I was counting. I knew I'd be 12.